That's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you. Any more announcements?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you for everyone the show have been today. We received many call from the resident, they make a ticket for some no address in the back in the house. Anyone they have is not a notice, make we fix this issue. We need from everyone, make the clean from in the back and make the address in the back of the house. And everyone they have a ticket is no notice, maybe we fix this issue. Please leave everything as a clean. Thank you.
Okay. No more announcements? All right, thank you. All right. Proclamations, recognitions, and presentations, there is none? Any additions or additions to the agenda?
No, sir.
No additions or additions. All right. So we'll move to the public comment. It's expected to be long. And it seems like we have fair samples of the community here. We expect everyone to respect each other, do not direct your comment to each other, and...
Any additions or additions to the agenda?
I can hear myself. But anyways, I hope this meeting will go smooth and we can start the public comments.
Thank you. And I ask everybody in the hallway, just a moment. I ask everybody in the hallway, please keep it down so you can hear if your name is called for public comment. I'm gonna, so I, let me go through this real quick. I'm gonna go through the people that are here first. Can you please? Thank you. I'm gonna go through public comments of those that are here to speak in public, in person, before I do my email public comments. As for the public comments that I received through emails today, I received probably about 125 emails. I will not be reading all those because 50 plus or 60 plus of them came after 4 o'clock. Unfortunately, our cutoff time is 4 o'clock for public comments. So I will be reading every public comment that we received before 4 o'clock today. I will start with locals, and I have Lukman Saleh. 3 minutes, sir.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone.
My name is Lukman Saleh. I'm the Yemeni president. I have been living in the city since 1997. Since that year, the city has been suffering from budget divisions and has declared bankruptcy several times. For the first time in the history of my life in the city, a budget surplus is declared this year. I'd like to extend my sincere thanks to the mayor of the city, Dr. Amar Galib, to the city councils, and to the city manager, Mr. Matt Gerebrino and his team. Guys, keep up the great works. We are proud of you. We are proud of your presence in these positions, and you deserve our help and support. How nice it is to see the right person in the right place. We look forward to seeing our city beautiful, healthy, and safe. And this requires more efforts and continuous work from all of us with sincerity. For Resolution 2023-82, we respect all laws supporting political, religious, sexual, and other freedoms. And we hope that everyone will exercise their personal freedom in their private places. And the public places and city property will not be used to support any freedoms of any parties without the freedoms of other parties. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, then, Blasma.
Hello, Mayor and Council. First, I would like to comment on Resolution 2023-74. I'm just looking for clarification on the time for the Hindu rally. In one part of the resolution, it says 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., the other says 5:00 to 7:00. On Resolution 2023-77, I just want to express excitement for the opportunity for Hamtramck to expand her home and purchase the neighboring property to add a sunroom. I think that's a really great program, and we... More approvals of these kinds of projects will really help other people know that that's an option. 2023-78, I support this additional street sweeper purchase. Based on the attachments to this resolution, it will really pair well with the one we just purchased. This one will pick up larger items, the other one will pick up all the smaller debris, and it'll be a lot more efficient for our city. I also support the extension of the alley contract. It's my understanding that there's only two alleys left, and they've been doing a good job with that. And I also support the purchasing of new carpet and flooring throughout City Hall. It'll really help bring us into, you know, this level of prosperity that our city is moving into. I do have some concerns regarding Resolution 2023-81. From reading the attachments, I just want to get some clarification about the taser purchase. And I read in the description of the Taser 7 that there's an option for the taser to turn off after 5 seconds automatically, or that each different municipality can choose to disable that function. So I just would like some assurance that we would not be disabling that function for our community. And finally, regarding...
Do you have a minute?
Okay. Regarding Resolution 2023-82, I'm really concerned about some of the wording of this resolution. As it stated, I feel like some groups are going to be discriminated against that have traditionally been included in our flags on Joseph Campo. We have flown the Cherokee Nation flag and the African Union flag for several years. Neither of those groups are recognized countries or nations. And under this resolution, we would no longer be able to fly that flag. Also, I'm curious why this would stop at religious, or at flags when in other areas of our city, we are very inclusive and have representation for our religious groups? Can I ask for a minute?
Sure.
Well, I think you have to ask for the elected body, not the clerk.
I asked the mayor.
Okay.
And I'm curious why this, the rhetoric in this resolution, if it would stop at flags? Because saying that it's, our city is not going to support one religion or anything like that, will this present, prevent us from having to eat our Christmas decorations? Would this eliminate our free parking for religious holidays? It just doesn't make sense the way it's written, that we would draw the line at flags. And then also, there's a section in the resolution that says each group is represented by the country to which they belong. And I'm curious how we're defining country? Is that the United Nations' recognized countries? Would that include countries that are not recognized by the United Nations? So I have a lot of questions about the language used in this resolution.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Rose Carver.
Thank you for your time. And may I address the esteemed and distinguished councilpeople here before me? I am here to support Resolution 82. Hamtramck may be one of the most diverse cities in the country, but we have to draw the line somewhere. Sure, many Hamtramck residents have fled countries where being gay is a death sentence, but nothing says we have to make it comforting and welcoming here. While we can't legally discriminate against LGBTQ people in the United States anymore, the City Council of Hamtramck can say, "Ill, now be proud somewhere else." Because that is the meaning of neutrality, my fellow citizens. Additionally, at a time when all of us feel the burn of inflation, we can't expect to cost over, to throw costs towards rainbow flags, we have to spend $146,996 on tasers for the Hamtramck Police Department. And just in case any of these radical gays get out of line, during Pride Month, no less. Bravo! And so allow me to humbly present a redesign of the Hamtramck City Platter to underscore this brave council's position on neutrality. This new sign will ensure that visitors and residents know that this is a city that stands for diversity so long as it doesn't offend the religious beliefs and backgrounds of others. The slogan shall now read, "Hamtramck welcomes you if you're straight." And this is a historic moment, a moment where the basic rights of LGBTQ folks are under attack. And history will look back at these seven brave members of City Council and remembered, they remained neutral. The headlines will read, "Heroic: Hamtramck City Council Votes to Stay Neutral During Pride Month, Bans Pride Flags on All City Property, and Instead Invests in Police Tasers." Now, and this might be a little on the nose for you, and if you don't like this poster, I do have another one. This is, obviously, we'll have to paint over the rainbow on the mural because that is a little too gay. But we will have the world in two straight miles, so it's a little bit, it's covert, so it's not right on the nose. Anyway, thank you so much. I yield my, the rest of my time.
All right.
Thank you.
Russ Gordon.
Hey, can I get everybody's, address their city? At least mention their city?
No, it's okay.
It's okay.
Please keep it down. Thank you. Please keep it down. Go ahead, Russ.
Okay. I'm obviously speaking about the flag ordinance, the...
23-82.
To eliminate the pride flag. You know, there have been a number of reasons presented for it. Probably the biggest is that some of the flags don't represent flags of nations. Others, that the flag selection was done without a quorum. There have been many, many reasons put forth for this. We've always had flags that were not flags of nations displayed there, since day one, 10 years ago. That's not new. I think the elephant in the room, the thing we all see, the thing we're not talking about, is that homosexuality is a sin. And I think that's what's weighing on people and driving this decision. It's, and that, that is an inappropriate reason for banning this flag. There could be many reasons. Gay folks have been, have been sidelined for centuries, okay? They, back in the day, they were executed. It's maybe a sin, but it's a reality, okay? And it exists. And there are a lot of gay people in this community, and that flag represents them. It's inclusive. It allows them to feel like they belong in this community. For many, many years, for centuries, they haven't belonged anywhere. They've... Okay. I've had, I had a real good friend of mine years ago. He was executive in a, one of the largest administrator, topic administrator in one of the largest medical centers in the country. And he, he couldn't come out. He got married to a woman just to maintain his cover. This, this has been the history of gay folks. You know, 40, 50 years ago, folks started coming out. When they did, they lost friends, family. It was, it's pitiful. Recently, recently, because we live in the United States of America, it's, it's no longer, there's no longer a law against it, there's no, folks can stand up.
Thank you, Russ.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Okay. What it's all about is pride. That's it.
Thank you, sir.
They need to have their pride.
Thank you, Russ. Hassanon, 3 minutes.
Good afternoon, Hassan. Good afternoon, Hassan. You're a public activist. I live in Dearborn. I just want to tell everybody, you know, Pride Month, don't put it down our throats, okay? Because let me say something. That flag, the pride flag, you think you guys want to put it down my throat? Let me put my Lebanese flag down your throat, okay? We're not gonna sit here and put the Yemeni flag. We're not gonna sit here and put any flag. We're just gonna put the American flag. That's what we support. I am a Lebanese person, and I support the American flag. We are not gonna sit here and tolerate you guys coming and saying, "Oh, it's Pride Month." You're gay, no problem. You be gay by yourselves, not by... Don't sit here, throw it down kids' throats, my throat, or anybody's throat.
Sir, can you address to this way?
I'm addressing, what's it called?
Now, this way.
I'm sitting here talking, I'm addressing you guys.
Yes, thank you.
I ain't addressing nobody else but council.
Thank you.
Please. You interrupted me, so I got 30 seconds. Anyways, just to let the council know that the Pride Day, or Pride Month, or whatever they want to call it, don't put it down our throats. We support the American flag. My parents came to this country in 1972 from Lebanon. You don't see my family sitting there putting the flag and say, "I'm gonna put the Lebanese flag down your throat." You keep your flag, you want to put it at your house, put it at your house. Do not put it on city property, and do not put it in our schools. Nice and simple.
Calm down, guys. All right, guys. Calm down.
October 10th, I closed Dearborn School Board. Why? Because they're trying to put sexual explicit materials in our schools. Don't put it down my throat. You want to put that? Read it to your kids at your homes. Don't be reading it to our kids in school. We are tired of this. At the end of the day, we are not gonna tolerate nobody putting no flag in city property or anywhere. You want to put the American flag, you want to put the LGBTQ flag, put it at your house. Don't sit there and try to bring it in our city, in our schools, and teach children something that we do not read around our children. So I'm asking the City Council today to approve a resolution that no flag but the American flag to be in any city or any school. Thank you, and have a great day.
Thank you. Naeji, have one.
Good evening. My name is Naeji, and I'm an immigrant from a small village in a country called Yemen. I came to this great country when I was less than seven years old. But I did not always think that this was a great country. In fact, from the time I got here until I graduated college, I was constantly told, "America is an evil country. America is an unjust country. America is a racist country." I felt like I did not belong here. Over the years, as I grew up in America, I had flashbacks to my early life in Yemen. I remember that we were so poor, we would have only chicken once in a blue moon. And when we did have the chicken, we ate everything. And I remember, we had no running water, no electricity, and no bathrooms. Yes, I did remember all of this, growing up. But you see, it was a faint distant memory, as if it were my imagination or my dream. So for 20 years, I never traveled beyond the borders of America. That changed in 2000, when I visited Yemen for the first time. And needless to say, I was in complete shock. The level of poverty and chaos that I personally witnessed there was at another level. The effect it had on me was similar to when you're in a nightmare and you suddenly wake up. It was a complete shock. Alhamdulillah, praise be to God, now I am thankful that God has blessed me with the opportunity to be and live in this wonderful country, where I have the freedom to live my life as I see fit, where I can worship my Creator in peace and tranquility. Unfortunately, many people in our country don't seem to understand this. They don't know, or they don't want to know what it's like to live in extreme poverty, what it's like to live under severe repression, where there's no freedom of speech, no freedom of religion. I owe my success and my livelihood first and foremost to the Creator Himself, Almighty God, then to this great country. Our soldiers fought, bled, and died in the jungles of Iwo Jima and the beaches of Omaha so that you and I can live with peace, prosperity, and freedom. Those soldiers fall under the American flag and no other. It's shameful and embarrassing to have any other flag in public buildings. You have the freedom to display whatever you wish in your home or your private businesses. We respect all nations, cultures, and their flags, but we only salute the American flag. Do not waver and do not flinch. You are doing the right thing. God bless you, and God bless the United States of America.
Mike Hashem. I need you to keep it down out there.
Mike Hashem, Mike Hashem.
Sir in the red shirt, if you keep that up, you're gonna leave. The guy in the red shirt. Mike Hashem, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
My name is Mike Hashem. First thing I want to say, all of us are immigrants. All of us came from countries to respect this flag. And there should be no other flag in this country other than the American flag. We have civil wars in our countries. We have famine in our countries. But to come to a country to display a colorful flag that means nothing to us, I mean, that's a disgrace. It's a disgrace to the people that lost their lives for these countries in wars. It's a disgrace for this flag for people who lose their lives just across the border to have a better life in this country. And let me tell you something. I'm all for removing the gay pride flag. Because you know what? Let me tell you something. This is America. I have the right to say I'm against the gay pride flag. If anyone has an issue with it, they could go kick rocks. But in the end of the day, this is the flag that should be up. No other flag.
Khalil Uthman.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I would start. I had the privilege and honor to work in this great city for four years. And this great city embraced diversity despite the fact, in the past years, it suffers so many economic hardships. And while we celebrate the budget balance and the surplus that this leadership introduced under their leadership within one year, and that surplus will continue for many years to come, I do believe throughout my time here, working with different minorities, different culture, different... The city, the city got along really, really good. People, people lived here for many years, and they got along really good. Entertaining, or introducing, or start getting the communities, or segregating the communities based on ethnic and racial or groups or political affiliations, this is just gonna create hate. This is gonna create division. This is gonna create so many things for the city. So if we take a step back and celebrate what this leadership has achieved today and what's coming in the upcoming years for the city, it's much better than focusing on something that's really gonna define the city. I do support the proposal and the resolution that you guys proposing. And I do believe one flag, the United States of America, should be the only flag that's sitting or standing in the city properties. Thank you.
Stephanie Butler.
Today, I want to stand here and talk about something that wraps around this proposal you guys have. I'm a member, fairly new member of a Facebook group for Hamtramck. And I have to tell you that the Yemenis are being so targeted on this page by members of the LGBT community. They're being baited. They're being put in traps to say things. They're being threatened to be sued for talking about their religion, this, that, and the other. It's relentless attacks on this community. And we're talking, we're sitting here talking about flying flags that has nothing to do with making peace in this community. It's unacceptable to witness the targeting of individuals based on their religious beliefs. Such acts of discrimination and mistreatment undermine the principles of respect, tolerance, and human dignity that are essential for a just and inclusive society. The deliberate harassment and mockery inflicted upon the Yemeni community by individuals on this Facebook group are reprehensible. No one should be subjected to such degrading treatment because of their faith. It is a violation of their fundamental rights and an assault on the principles of religious freedom and coexistence. We stand here and we talk about coexistence, but it's okay for one group to attack another group because those people want to stand by their faith. This is America. We don't fly heterosexual flags. We don't fly any of these other flags. That doesn't mean that people aren't free to exist. They are. But we don't have to fly a flag on city property next to the United States' flag that slams in the face, goes against things that people do not believe. If we're gonna respect one side, we're gonna respect the other. And that's all I have to say.
Gracie Caddu.
I rise today to speak against 22, 20, eh, the flag resolution and the lie that it's based upon. This was a, this resolution is brought about through bold-faced lies. This resolution has zero to do with hate groups flying a flag unless the city administration fully and truly believes that the LGBTQI community of Hamtramck is a full-fledged hate group. Though, from what I can see at this gathering, there's only one hate group listed by the Southern Poverty League here tonight, and that's Moms for Liberty. I challenge the council to return with a resolution that is transparent and name their real target for erasure, which is the LGBTI community. If the council chooses to carry through with this lie, they are doing a disservice to Hamtramck and the community they claim to serve. Mr. Mayor, you should be ashamed for this. You should be ashamed for this farce and for having Mohammed bring this forth. When you said four days ago in reference to flying the pride flag, "He doesn't have to worry. There is a higher-level decision coming." That isn't democracy, sir. That isn't the America I fought for. That's fascism. It is clear that you are either ignorant or hateful and spiteful. The clear and abundant desire to shove this community back in the closet is seen by all of us. And I leave you with a history lesson. The rising of Stonewall was in response to hate, and my community will rise again. I fought for you, I fought for your right to hate me, and you're welcome.
Joey Roberts.
Please.
Folks, we will clear this room.
All right, guys.
Everyone has not respect. Everyone has a right to speak, whether you agree with them or not.
Yeah, please, don't.
Joey Roberts.
Thank you.
If you don't keep it down, we will clear the hallway.
You have any other officer out there?
Yeah.
Joey Roberts.
Joey Roberts. Come on, drop.
Yeah.
Hello, Mayor, Senate Council members, Kansas State, and all that. My thing is about the police policy. Police have policy in Hamtramck, but the citizens don't know what the policy is. Police violate their policy every day. What they expect our superiors to sit there and exclude them on that? But hey, how do the people know what policy they are breaking? My brother was beat up two weeks ago. They broke three thresholds: my gate, my screen door, and my door. And beat my brother over my house. I asked for the policy twice, was rejected because they said it jeopardizes their procedures. I don't want to know the procedures. I just want the policy. Are they able to smoke? Are they able to smoke on a job? Are they able to drink on a job? Are they able to run red lights? Are they able to just be rude to a citizen for no reason at all? That is my thing. It's like the police, the citizen needs to know the policy of the police so we can hold them accountable. Because they get away with way too much. They sit there, they disrespected me, they disrespect my mom. My mom is eighty-five pounds. She's a little short lady. A six-foot-five-seven lady told her she's gonna take her to jail. My mom said, "No, you'll take me to hospital." She's eighty-five pounds. I'm asking for the policy to be released to the citizens of Hamtramck, of Hamtramck. The police policy, not the procedures, not to jeopardize their integrity or their safety. The policy, the rules they have to follow. How can we hold them accountable if the citizens don't know what rules they gotta follow? We have to wear a seatbelt. Do cops have to wear a seatbelt? Can cops smoke in a police car? Can cops just pull up and question you for no reason? I'm asking for the policy to be released to the citizens of Hamtramck. The police policy, not the procedures, the policy, the rules and the rules they have to follow. I see cops, I see police blow through red lights all the time. I see police make red U-turns all the time. I see police not wearing a seatbelt all the time. I see police driving around with cracked windshield all the time. But no one holds them accountable. The citizens of Hamtramck were held accountable. When they threaten a citizen of Hamtramck, should I be held accountable? That's why I'll stop from today, but I'm asking for the release of Hamtramck Police Policy. I requested it twice, I was denied twice.
Thank you, Joey.
I just want to know their policy.
Thank you, Joey.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
I have Ifamira Kajju. Ifamira Kajju?
Ifamira Kajju?
Something Kajju?
How you pronounce that?
Ifamira, Ifamira.
Ifamira. Ifamira Kajju?
Thank you. I expected to be going at the end. My mistake. Three minutes.
Um, I definitely don't want to talk for three minutes. So my concern, I really want to stay in my lane, and it is about the the way the policy regarding the flying the flag reads. But I'm an artist and I'm not a poly sci major or anything like that. So I want to talk about specifically my concern about the wording and how it's gonna relate to art in the city. Sidewalk chalk murals are a really great way for emerging artists to get kind of like experience. It's a great way for small business owners to get artwork, and it's temporary. It's a, it's a kind of a tradition in Hamtramck. We have children who come out for events and do sidewalk drawings and all this kind of thing. And I'm just concerned by the way that it reads, that that won't be something that's allowed to be diverse in nature and celebratory of pride. And so I would like for the city council to just think about that and maybe take some time to reword it and consider how it's gonna impact how we express art and diversity in the city specifically, when it doesn't pertain to a flag flying on a pole, right? So I know we're talking about flags specifically, that's been the hot topic online. But the way it reads, it talks really about images, and those can be really powerful and important for visibility. The queer community is prone to suicide, so when it comes to art and expression, I would really like that to be considered and maybe to consider rewording the ordinance. That's actually it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bill Meyer?
Mr. what?
Bill Meyer.
Bill Meyer?
He's over here.
I'm already here. Hello, Councilor Mayor, Bill Meyer from one Hamtramck. So we all have one enemy that we all have to fight here, all the same. The enemy is hate. We have hate on all sides. We have hate to deal with every issue we have. We have to conquer hate. Love is the answer. We have to respect every human being. As far as religious friends of mine, I think you all believe, you should believe, that every human is made in the image of God. We're all important, every one of us, regardless of what our sexual orientation is, what our gender is, whatever. We're all human beings. We're all in this ship together. We're all gonna go down together if we don't watch it. So the first thing, I'm sure religious people should respect everybody as a human being first. We don't have to agree with anyone's sexual orientation and gender and all that, but you still have to respect people as human beings. And I see nothing but love from this council. I don't see any hate coming from this Councilor Mayor. I've watched you for a long time. That's why I say I support this council. I think you're trying to find a solution. And the most difficult thing to do is to find a way for people to live with other people that they don't agree with. That's the hardest thing to live with. I've been doing this a long time. And you don't want to get in an argument with people because it's over with. Once you start fighting, you don't get to find a solution. You have to find solutions, and I know you're trying to do it. Thank you for that. But I'm not here to talk about that. I'm here to talk about something else. So can I have an extra minute?
Yes, mayor.
You can.
Oh, I'm sorry. You. Okay. And by the way, you're supposed to address the mayor, not the council. So I'm the chair of the Michigan Peace Council, which is a chapter of US Peace Council, which is a member of the World Peace Council, which is the largest peace organization in the world. And we have a chapter here in Michigan. And we have a project coming up, I want to give you a heads up because I'm gonna, the Michigan Peace Council is gonna presenting to you a move the money resolution to the Hamtramck City Council. It's coming up soon, and I want you to know about it. It's the call in Congress and the president to move significant funds away from military spending, from military budget, which is now close to a trillion dollars, in order to fund social services and to hold in-depth public hearings in each city, in our city, on the basic human needs of Hamtramck residents that are unmet because of government appropriations towards the Pentagon. We have to start spending wisely instead of funding wars all around the world. That's killing people. We have to find a way to save people and help people. And I know you're all for that, so we're gonna present that to you later. Also, we're gonna urge our mayor to join a group called Mayors for Peace, which was started in nineteen eighty-two by, in the UN, by a mayor from Nagasaki. You know, the first city that was bombed with a nuclear bomb. One of only two cities. The goal is to join in solidarity with over eight thousand cities in the world. Mayors from eight thousand cities are getting together to work together to press for nuclear abolition, nuclear bombs, to contribute to the attainment of lasting world peace and to solve vital problems for the human race such as starvation, poverty, the plight of refugees, human rights abuses, and environmental degradation. This is what we need to do. We have to be known as a peace city. We have to be inclusive. We have to include everyone in the city. And I know you want to include the LGBTQIA2S community as much as anybody else. You respect them. I feel that. I know that. The flag issue is a tough, tough thing to deal with. We have to find a way for everybody to accept and compromise ourselves. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Darren Shelton? Three minutes, yes.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you, thank you for being here today. My name is Darren Shelton. I am executive director of Planet N Theater, just down the street on Kniff. We're a nonprofit performing arts organization that has been here in the city of Hamtramck for, it'll be thirty years on Labor Day. We're an institution in the city long before my time. And I'm here today to say that the LGBT community is the lifeblood of our organization and of arts and entertainment in general. I understand everybody that's coming up here today and saying things along the lines of it should only be the American flag. I understand that. But the fact of the matter here is that it's not just the American flag. There are plenty of flags represented. Because this is a diverse city. It's a great city, and the diversity is what makes it great. I am here on behalf of allowing the LGBT community's voice to be heard as well. Alongside, because I do believe that's what makes this city great. I've worked my entire adult life here in this city. I don't think sexuality is a political issue. The LGBT community deserves their presence and contributions within this community to be acknowledged alongside all of the other great populations here. Because together is what makes this city great. It's why I believe in this city. It's why I work every day here to try to improve this city. This resolution to me feels like a thinly veiled attack on one flag. I understand. Mr. Mayor, I implore you to strike down Resolution Twenty, Twenty-three, Eighty-two and allow the LGBT members of this community that are here, that are working every day for this city, to be acknowledged, to have their contributions highlighted alongside everyone else doing wonderful things in this city. I'm hopeful that you will choose to put political views aside and do the right thing and leave with love for humanity and give a voice to a group of people that have been systematically held down and voiceless for, for, forever. That being said, I am not naive. I understand that this vote has all but passed. And I am here to say, Mr. Mayor and council members, that this battle did not start today, and it will not end today. Thank you.
Alright, sir.
Thank you. Matthew Pizzielli?
Matthew?
Matthew?
Matthew Pizzielli?
Pizzielli.
Matthew Pizzielli?
Matthew Pizzielli?
It's okay.
Give him next.
Yes.
I'll wait. Come on. Come on, I'll wait. Sir, Matthew Pizzielli?
Who were they matched?
No? Okay. Emmeline Ratauski, Ratauski? Emmeline Ratauski?
What, Emmeline?
Emmeline Ratauski.
Emmeline Ratauski? Emmeline Ratauski?
That. Okay. Three minutes.
Thank you. Hello?
No, please keep that down.
Down, okay. Okay.
Hey, over here.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, hello, council.
Hello.
As a resident of Hamtramck, hearing about Resolution Twenty, Twenty-three, Eighty-two before council today makes me ask, does Hamtramck not want to maintain a reputation of welcoming, of being a welcoming city to one and all? Is it not proud of the many groups and individuals, a community of individuals that are pertinent to its nurturing, growth, and ultimate success? Does it believe in upholding the separation of church and state? I believe this is an issue of human rights. The reason behind this resolution seems reminiscent of fear mongering, manipulating the city's citizens to think they are in potential danger if this doesn't pass. I believe it's the opposite. If this resolution does pass and pride flags are banned to fly on city property, I think it sends an open message to those who are against the rights of LGBTQI folks and encourages harmful intolerance and most of the time false perceptions of the community. I want to live in a city where I know my friends and family feel safe, seen, and heard. This is a basic right that should be extended to all well-meaning citizens. And to this, passing today's resolution would display an active disagreement, I think. I really hope you, Mr. Mayor, and this council takes these words into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy Louise?
Cindy Louise?
Cindy Louise?
Cindy, Cindy Louise. Cindy, Cindy Louise!
She's coming, she's coming.
Welcome, Cindy. Three minutes.
Do I need to?
No, just keep there.
Okay. This isn't even thinly disguised. This is an attack on LGBTQI people. And let's be real about what's going on here. You have joined, added one more on top of the more than five hundred resolutions and laws that have been proposed and/or passed in this country, attacking LGBTQI people, making it illegal for people to be, forcing situations in which LGBTQI youth are very much in danger of of suicide and other forms of self-hate for no damn reason other than the fact of some old male supremacist religious ideology. Now, you gotta face that that's what that is. This is saying, no, not here either. We join with, you know, what, DeSantis and Donald Trump and Greg Abbott. Congratulations, people. That's inclusive to you? So that's one thing. The other thing I have to say is, this thing about inclusion under the flag, people have raised that. We are, I'm someone who is not included under the American flag. On June twenty-fourth, the people who run this country made it that we women have no longer the right to control our bodies. There's tens of thousands of people who are immigrants on the border, who are suffering terrible conditions at the hands of this country. There was a Muslim ban at the beginning of Trump's regime in this country. That will be re-imposed. There is a trajectory going along here. You have the choice to either stand up to it and do something about it or join it like you're doing right now. I don't accept it. Myself, I'm a revolutionary. I'm a revcom, and I will say this, that the government that I'm going for and fighting for is one that not only allows the oppressed people and different things, but actually teaches them the history and leads people to stand up to this kind of BS. No respect to you at all for even bringing this here.
Go Trump!
Caitlin Drinker?
Caitlin, just stop.
Caitlin Drinker? Caitlin Drinker?
Caitlin?
Ali Al Marisi is next, so be ready.
Thank you. Hello, I'm here to comment on Resolution Twenty, Twenty-three, Eighty-two. My name's Caitlin Drinker, and I've been a Hamtramck resident for ten years. I'm also a high school counselor and have been for most of the last ten years. Over the years, I have worked with a number of LGBTQ students who have been rejected by their own families and their own communities for simply being who they are. I've had students kicked out of their homes, threatened with violence, and even death, and faced incredible adversity solely because of who they are and who they choose to love. According to the CDC, LGBTQI youth are more than four times as likely to attempt suicide than their peers and more than four times as likely to be the victims of violence. The rates are even higher for LGBTQI youth of color. In the US alone, one LGBTQI youth attempts suicide every forty-five seconds. So in the time I've been up here, an LGBTQI youth will have attempted suicide on average. One of the biggest protective factors keeping LGBTQI youth alive is acceptance. LGBTQI youth who live in a community that is accepting of LGBTQI people report much lower rates of suicide attempts. Hamtramck is a community that has since its beginning welcomed outsiders, immigrants new to this country, people with all kinds of traditions and beliefs, values, and outlooks. Flying the pride flag at City Hall is not going to encourage people to be gay. It's not gonna corrupt anyone's children. It is merely affirming the fact that LGBTQI people have a right to exist and a right to belong in the city where they live. For LGBTQI youth who are rejected by their families, seeing that pride flag flying in our city might give them one small glimmer of hope to hold on and not to give up. As a citizen of Hamtramck, I would hope that the council would consider the lives of our most marginalized youth and the effect that decisions like these have on their mental health and well-being. Your actions tonight speak volumes about who in this community you choose to represent and who you don't represent at all, and we will all remember that when we vote on August eighth. Thank you.
Ali Al Marisi? Protect the kids! Ali Al Marisi? Ali Al Marisi?
Ali Al Marisi? Everybody come out, we're gonna clear up, okay? Ali Al Marisi, where is he at? Whoever's not sitting, get cleared up. Ali Al Marisi? Everybody, come up. You left, you left.
Ash in the bowl seat?
Alright, Ash in the bowl seat? Ash in the bowl seat? No, you have to sit over here. They're not here, there's no... They're not here.
Ash Porter?
Ash Porter? Ash Porter? You guys, there's no seats here, you guys gotta come out. Come out, yeah, come out, come out. Sir, come out. Once seats are open, then you guys can come back in, okay? Just right over here. On the side. Step back. Alright, step back over here. You can do it from right there, okay?
No, Ash Porter?
Ash Porter?
Craig Brown?
Craig Brown?
Thank you, welcome, Craig.
Don't?
It's yours, and it's yours, he'll be next. Oh, he'll be next.
Hi.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for having me here. I would like to address the main issue I was talking about with the flag and all that. Okay. I've rented here for 10 years. I love Hamtramck with all of my heart. I am, I just purchased a home. Been a resident here for a very long time, I'm very proud of that fact. Why would our town, one of the most unique and diverse cities in the world, put in an ordinance to make any group feel unwelcome or not accepted? That is why I'm here, and that is, I'm here to ask why. This has nothing to do with a personal viewpoint on sexual orientation, and if it does, then this council is filled with nothing but bigots. I'm sure others here will have better and more articulate viewpoints on acceptance and diversity than myself. Even though that is my main reason for coming here, I have perhaps an unpopular viewpoint on why putting a band on a flag with a rainbow on it is completely ridiculous. If we can't change your bigoted viewpoints on acceptance, maybe I can change, maybe I can, uh, maybe I can convince you to vote with your wallets. The LGBTQ community is the single best thing for property value in the history of the world. Ferndale was nothing but a Redford or a Warren or a blue-collar town when I was a kid. The gay community came in and painted that town with a rainbow brush, and look what happened. It's stunning. The gay community are fearless risk-takers. Throughout history, as a community, they have turned cities around single-handedly. Palmer Woods, Indian Village, and Boston Edison are filled with rainbow flags. San Francisco was a bunch of dirty hippies. San Francisco is now the most sought-after real estate in the history of the world, in the entire world, sorry. Big Tech may have caused that too, but that would have never happened without their, uh, but that would have never, blah blah. If it wasn't for the fearless risk-takers painting San Francisco with a rainbow brush, that would have never happened. It never would have been Big Tech. Hey, what's up? Okay, look at the Lower West of Man, look at the Lower West Side of Manhattan, the list goes on and on. I can't believe this is even up for debate in my beloved city of Hamtramck in 2023. This is a step 70 years backwards, and you all in opposition should be embarrassed. If we didn't already have a constitutional standard separating church and state, I would get into how nothing in the Quran has scripture that has issues with homosexuality. So I don't have to go there. The Empire State Building has rainbow lights on it during Pride Month. Hamtramck has been, is, and shall continue to be a place of diversity and acceptance. It is the very foundation of what makes us great. Thank you, dona bar, shubran, inshallah.
Uh, Assir Nabolsi? Nabolsi? Nabolsi, Assir Nabolsi? What's your name?
My name is Assir Nabolsi.
Okay, go ahead, three minutes.
Salaam alaikum, my name is Assir Nabolsi. I am a convert. I took my shahada at the Tauhid Center. I'm an ex-nuke with the United States Nuclear Power Training Command. I'm a citizen scientist, an anti-oppression activist, and I'm a transgender man. I want to keep this really brief. Equating the oppressed with the oppressor is definitely and fundamentally dangerous. It wasn't just the Jews that they killed. It was genuinely every demographic in this room. There's no safety from the trivialization of violent hatred, and none of us are safe, besides the oppressors in our midst.
Thank you. Al Hassan Al Shahbi?
Hassan Al Shahbi?
Shahbi, Shahbi.
Hassan Al Shahbi?
Shahbi.
Hassan? Hassan?
Hassan, three minutes.
Okay. Salaam alaikum, I'm Tuba Al Akbar. I want to speak, I think, in Arabic, because I'm since, uh, sentenced. I don't know exactly how I'm gonna explain to you. But I think I'm gonna speak in Arabic, it's better. Can give you like what I mean exactly.
Mayor Khalil can translate.
Thank you.
So basically, he said, he has been living here, in this city, for the past 21 years. And he, as an individual, and his community, have cared for this city economically and for the safety of the people in this city. And he thinks that the, flying the flag, the LGBT flag, is something unacceptable and it's odd, he said, to humanity and to the nature of people. And he thinks it will destroy the new generations by implementing or imposing this agenda on them. And he is calling the council to vote in support of this resolution to ban any flag from flying. Basically, that's the main idea for this.
Jamal Al Turk?
Jamal Al Turk? Jamal Al Turk?
Jamal.
Ta'ala ya turki, ta'ala!
Good evening, everybody, my name is Jamal Al Turk. I'm a Hamtramck citizen since 2004. And I used to be a lawyer in Yemen and assistant of the president of Saudi Arabia. So when I speak, it's gonna be include some legal rules. I hope everybody understands this. All of us, now that Hamtramck is a welcoming city, but what we, what is very clear, that the LGBT community is aggressive on the legal rules for exercise their rights through their endeavor to exercise their right outside of the special scope defined by the law. We see, we see them liken themselves to the civil rights movement that completed the liberation of a black citizen. But they forgot that the nation was not divided above that movement. And that it didn't have flag to be raised everywhere, since only states and international organizations raise their flags. While I call our representative in the municipal council to issue a decision banning the raising of flags other than the city, or state, or the US flags on the city property, we call all the members of the gay community and it's supposed to stop this matters which not only include wrongful exercise of the rights, but also threaten the unity of the city, the society of Hamtramck. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Eli Martin?
Eli Martin?
Eli Martin? Jessica Quick is next. Eli Martin?
Jessica Quick, Martin? Eli Martin?
Eli, not Ali.
Eli?
Not Ali, Eli. Twenty-seven, twenty-one down, twenty-seven.
Ten down. Move it on.
We have twenty-seven left. And then sixty-one.
Hello, my name is Eli Martin. I'm both a Hamtramck resident and a member of the transgender community, which I'm sure many here will be horrified to know. Before I moved to Hamtramck while visiting here, I felt very welcomed by the LGBTQ representation provided by both city government, businesses, and the general community. I would be deeply saddened to see this resolution passed and firmly believe that it will only deter future residents from moving to the city.
Thank you. Jessica Quick?
Jessica Quick? Jessica Quick?
Hello, my name is Jessie Quick. I am a resident of Hamtramck and I'm here to speak in opposition to Resolution 2023-82. This resolution claims to maintain neutrality towards Hamtramck residents in order to embrace the city's diversity and avoid discrimination or special treatment of its residents. While I agree with this sentiment in its truest form, I would like to make it clear that this resolution does quite the opposite of establishing neutrality. Instead, this resolution sends a clear message about what groups city leaders do not want to see represented, specifically the LGBTQ community, the African Union, and the Cherokee Nation, each of whose flags would be prohibited from being flown on city property under this new rule. I am going to focus my concerns with prohibiting the representation of the LGBTQ community because that's a place that I can speak from. I would like to remind the council that this action does not exist in a bubble. This year alone, the United States has seen over 650 anti-LGBTQ bills introduced in state and local legislatures, and yet this resolution implies that the American flag should represent this community. This includes legislation that prevents public recognition of the LGBTQ community. It is disgraceful that this city claims to represent, to celebrate its diversity while its leaders propose legislation that adds to this horrifying statistic and which cherry picks which aspects of the city's diversity you determine to be acceptable. Let me make this clear, that is not diversity. Diversity is not a passive label that you get to proclaim based on limited qualifications. Diversity is achieved when all residents are celebrated and supported equally. Diversity is when messaging from city leaders cannot be used to fuel attacks or vandalism against any community in the city. Diversity is when legislation is used to protect the dignity and safety of all groups that make up the community, not when it's used to remove representation of certain groups from the public eye. That is diversity. Let me remind you of the 650 pieces of anti-LGBTQ legislation that have been introduced. Let me also introduce the fact that with this legislation, LGBTQ people are now nine times more likely to be the victim of a violent hate crime than non-LGBTQ individuals. We've already seen several acts of vandalism targeting the LGBTQ community this month. Mayor Ghalib, you introduced a statement, you issued a statement denouncing one of these acts, but trends across the country make it clear that with legislation such as this, targeted hateful acts will become more likely. This resolution makes the city far from neutral towards its residents. Instead, this resolution is the city's way of removing equal representation of groups which add to the vibrant fabric of the city, groups of people who make up your neighbors, your business owners, and your loved ones, who make Hamtramck what it is, just as the people who would find themselves represented by international flags. All residents deserve to be recognized by this display, and your attempt to pick and choose who deserves recognition undermines the inclusivity that Hamtramck promotes. In the name of diversity which this resolution claims to want to promote and embrace, I urge you to vote against this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Haley Kane? Haley Kane?
We can't hear you. Haley?
Haley Kane?
Haley Kane? Haley Kane?
And then I have Theodore Mus...
I think Haley Kane is next.
Mathic is next, Theodore Mathic is next? Go ahead, Haley. You have to speak.
Just speak?
Yeah, just speak.
Hi, my name is Haley Kane. I relocated from California to Hamtramck, that's really far away, and I did it because I thought it was a diverse community. I knew this was a diverse city unlike anywhere in the world. And now I'm questioning whether it is, whether it is that diverse city. The city should reflect the community, and this resolution does not. Many of the people who are bringing the most value, not all of it, but quite a bit of it, are from the LGBTQ family. They are our neighbors, our business owners, their artists, their musicians, their parents, their teachers, and their local leaders. There is absolutely nothing neutral about banning rainbow flags on city property. It sends a clear message of discrimination. LGBTQ rights are human rights, and it is a huge disservice to the entire community and Hamtramck to send this message, and you are only welcome here if you're straight. I personally don't want to live in a place like this. And this is not what I thought I was getting into when I moved here, honestly. This resolution is thinly veiled hatred. What message, I'm gonna close this with, are kids, are we sending to young gay kids? This is not about making children gay. There are gay kids everywhere in the world. Being gay is natural, it's beautiful. Being trans is natural, and it's beautiful, and it's normal. And the pride flag represents making space for all humans on all the spectrums, and this is where we're going as a human species. You can't stop that. And the fact that we're even having this discussion about a rainbow flag in the city of Hamtramck is just honestly very sad to me. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Theodore Mathic? Theodore? And then Stephanie is next?
Stephanie? Stephanie? Stephanie's next?
Hello. My name is Theodore Mathic, I grew up in this town. I lived here off and on for the last 43 years. I grew up on Belmont Street between Cohn and Ellery. Thirty-eight sixty-six Belmont, went to Hamtramck High. I love this city. And this whole, this whole resolution is haram, I feel like. What I, I remember when people said that people like you, and you, and all of you shouldn't belong here, that you don't belong here. I remember that you don't deserve to be recognized in this community. When the word effing Arabs was thrown around with a casualness that made me sick. Like, oh my God. I prayed with my Muslim brothers on my sports teams at Hamtramck High. We all prayed to the same God. I remember having conversations with my Muslim friends, and they talked about me, because I was a Christian, as a people of the book. They told me that hate is haram. They told me that hate is a sin. We were neighbors, we were friends. We were kids and didn't care about the racist, bigoted rhetoric that many of the grownups around us were using. We were friends. Now here we are, decades later, and you're acting like the same bigoted people wanting to codify the discrimination against another group. People didn't want you to be here. People didn't want you to be here. Yeah, you know what? No, you don't talk to me.
You should not bond.
The hypocrisy is so apparent. You are using the resolution to force your religious beliefs on an entire city. You are not fooling anyone. The LGBTQI community belongs here. The LGBT community deserves visibility. The LGBTQI plus community are human beings. If anything, I'm willing to bet that the loudest people voicing their favor of this resolution are gay themselves. I oppose this resolution and I oppose you bigots and your bald-faced attempt to make this city a place of hate. Hate is haram!
Thank you. Stephanie, can you? Stephanie here?
Stephanie? Stephanie?
Uh, Aliya Schneider? Aliya Schneider?
Aliya Schneider.
Aliya Schneider.
Alice, oh Alice, Alice Schneider. Hi, Alice.
Okay, this is an interesting day. Alright, I am the current director of Public Pool Art Space. Um, it's right here on Kenneth and Gallagher. Um, I was not born in Hamtramck. I moved from a small-minded town in southeast Michigan. I moved to Hamtramck because I love the community. I love that we are all welcomed and celebrated, no matter who or what we identified are, religion, sexuality, any of that. Um, with what this is proposing, it feels like, um, this town is small-minded, what I moved from. I also feel like this is like a hate speech, telling us we can't be represented. It should never have gotten this far. Please do not pass this. Biannually, we, uh, at Public Pool, curate an LGBTQIA+ exhibition called The Mighty Real Queer Detroit and are proud to do so. This is an event that is throughout Detroit and other venues throughout Hamtramck. How can I explain to my artists that this once rich and inclusive community isn't welcoming them? This will affect my business, and it breaks my heart that Hamtramck is leading with hate and not understanding. Leading with exclusivity, not friendship and tolerance. Let not, let's not be small-minded, Hamtramck. And please do something about tearing down our flags on private businesses and residents. It feels terrible. Please. Okay? Thank you.
Eloise?
Eloise?
Wait, is that Eloise or Eleanor? Eleanor?
Eleanor.
Eleanor and Eleanor?
Eleanor.
No Eleanor, if there's not an Eleanor, she knows she was here. No Eleanor? Okay. Uh, Vandal Whitney, Vandal Whitney? Vandal Whitney?
Vandal Whitney? Vandal Whitney?
No? Hameed Al Hajji?
Hameed El Jani?
Al Hajji.
El Jani.
Al Hajji. Okay.
Amen.
Hold megaphone.
Have the surgeon take care of it. Have the surgeon take care of this, but not you.
Salaam alaikum wa rahmatullahi wa barakatuh.
Should I, should I go ahead?
I'm sorry?
Did he not translate what he said?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so basically he said that God has created, um, human from male and female, not from male or male, or just female and female, and he's talking about his own religious philosophy that, um, it is unacceptable in Islam. And he does not hate others, but he's sticking to his values, and he does not support flying the flags in public properties.
I believe it's Rin Al Hasani? Rin? Al Hasani, last name Al Hasani?
Al Hasani, last name? Al Hasani?
No movement?
Kazan Al Hasani?
Al Hasani.
Al Hasani.
Al Hasani, somebody call Al Hasani.
Al Hasani? Where's Al Hasani?
No. Ahmed Thabit?
Ahmed Thabit.
Right here.
No.
No?
Ahmed? Did you want to speak at all comments also, or is this one time?
I'll speak at the end too.
Okay.
I want to speak at all comments.
Bismillah, rahmanir rahim. Uh, salaam alaikum, my name is Ahmed Thabit. I'm a resident of Hamtramck for over seven years. Hamtramck is known as the whole world in two square miles, for its culture, for its religion, diversity, and for a lot of many things. Most people had true endeared to their, you know, they hold truth endeared to their culture and values and religion beliefs. And we elected you representatives, the mayor and the city councils, right? Elected you, uh, to represent us and our interests, not other people that does not even live in this city. Represent us and our interests and only, right? Okay? To, to, uh, I'm sorry. Because we accept, I'm sorry, we, because we will not accept being imposed on the, on this, and that's why we here today. We are standing here for our values and beliefs, for not only the future of my city, or the future of the next generation, but for the future of my children and the next. Please, uh, I would like to thank everybody for having this proposal, and I agree with you guys. Thank you so much.
You also wish to speak again at the end?
Salaam alaikum wa rahmatullah.
Salaam alaikum.
Praise is due to Allah, subhanahu wa ta'ala, blessings and salvation upon to our beloved Prophet Muhammad sallallahu alaihi wasallam. Respected mayor, our council, and all of the attendees for today's meeting. Ideology and country, two different things. If we allow ideology in our community, in our city, then a lot of ideologies are coming to you. And they are trying to get their approval for so many things. Some of the ideologies are good, some of them are very bad. Uh, you know, the ideology, everybody's talking about that, no religious support on behalf of them. There is nothing, none of the religion support them. I received so many calls, even the friendly church people, they contacted me. They are arranging a rally against of them. There are some people is here maybe today, they, they said they're gonna come here. But we respect all of the human being. But the natural thing is very important for our community. Allah created us, men and women, this is, which is natural. And the begin, uh, beginning of the creation to the end of the world. People will practice that and people will, will gain the benefit out of that. That's why our city officials, you made good decision. I, uh, appreciated you. And the second thing, before, uh, the, if this city council is now, people say Muslim, Islam, like this. Before I, I, uh, you know, lived this city like 25 years, and we faced so many problems with other religion, uh, council members and the mayors. Then, uh, then we did not hated them and called them like you are, uh, the racist and your, and we did not criticize their religion. We respected them. Now we need to respect our council members and the mayor. They are representing our community, our city. They are not representing the religion of Islam, no. They're Muslim. This is true, but they're representing the community, the city of Hamtramck. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, I, I believe it's Tazmar?
Tazmar.
Tazmar? Tazmar? Tazmar?
Tazmar.
Jalan Jeffrey?
Jalan Jeffrey?
Do you also want to speak at the end, or is this what you're talking? Okay, go ahead.
Salaam alaikum wa rahmatullahi. We, the youth of Hamtramck stand against flying the LGBTQ flag in the city property. I call on all the city council members that represent us to make us, to protect us and protect our values. I just want to point out a few stats. Based on CDC, the LGBTQ males account for 82% of all HIV diagnoses. 82% of all the males, among the males with HIV diagnosis. And many more stats that will make us, they will keep us, they will, uh, they will make us rethink about the propaganda we're trying to normalize among our community. If the LGBTQ members want to deal with these issues of their own, I think it should be kept to them. And we as a youth do not want to associate with anything, we as a youth do not want to associate with anything that has a, that has been proven, that has been proven to be immoral even scientifically. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe Lisa Yunes?
Lisa Yunes.
Or, it's either Yunes or Lisa Youngs. Lisa Youngs? No Lisa Young? Okay, Lisa Youngs. Youngs? Three minutes, Lisa.
Um, my name is Lisa Youngs, and I am a resident and service worker and a social worker living in the city of Hamtramck. Inclusivity and acceptance is something that LGBTQ folks have always fought for. LGBTQ folks, especially gay and trans folks of color, have been at the forefront of our social movements. Social movements which benefit all people and the safety of all people across the country. Queer communities, um, especially trans folks are under attack legislatively. And for Hamtramck to attempt to equate the LGBTQ pride flag with hate symbols when it's a symbol of progress and love is now a local attack on our community, and it is a lockstep with the conservative white nationalist extremists in our country. Today I ask, what is it that is so threatening about a community of self-expression, love, and inclusivity? Why is it that a symbol of overwhelming acceptance is being treated as a hate symbol? To me, the answer is fear. Fear of the most loving, accepting folks, fear of our neighbors because of difference. Where else does the need to repress a message and symbol of love come from? We are a city of many different communities, and now we should resist the urge to other each other and let a spirit of love and acceptance guide this moment instead of hate and fear. Please say no to Resolution 2023-82. Thank you.
Whitney Greer?
Whitney Greer?
Uh, I'd just like to say thank you for just the time to speak today. I appreciate it. Um, I'll try to be quick. I'm sorry, it's hot. Um, so, I've heard many speakers tonight, um, each distinctly contrasting in either support or opposition of this ordinance. And I would just like to use my time here tonight to simply ask everyone to consider what it takes for a melting pot society to effectively coexist. And I personally believe that neutrality is crucial for that. Um, I believe that's the foundation that genuine and lasting equality is built upon. Nowhere in this legislature is it even implied that LGBTQIA+ would be attacked or not tolerated. And I feel that there's a lot of misinformation and not proper education in the hall, conversations I've had. Um, many people here don't even understand the details of this law. Um, I just, I wish we would just as a whole consider a more moderate approach. I feel like neutrality is what allows us all to exist and peacefully. And I guess that's all I'm willing to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hannah Jones?
Hannah Jones.
Hamyar, you're next?
Hamyar, you're next.
Hello, uh, my name is Hannah Jones. Um, I am here to speak on the flag issue, as many people are. Um, I would like to take it back to Russ Gordon, he spoke earlier. Um, his initial plan with these flags, um, and what that he shared with me, we are neighbors, um, is that he wants children, immigrant children, to look up at these flags and see a piece of home. Um, see something that feels familiar. Um, and I feel the same type of way about the LGBTQ community looking at these flags. You know, they need to see a piece of home here. Um, and this flag to me shows me that I am in a place that I, I am safe and that I am welcome, and that my fiance is safe and that she is welcome. Um, and that so many people, um, who visit for the arts and who live here are safe and welcome. And if you remove this flag, you are removing their feeling of safety and the way that they feel welcomed in this community. Um, so I urge you to please, please let us fly our flag, just like all the other countries, or not other countries, but just like all the other flags get to be flown. And, um, I think that it's really important that people see a piece of themselves on city property, um, and around the city in general. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hamyar? Hamyar?
Hamyar?
And then, yeah, Hamyar, you're next. And then I have Ahmed Al Salami next?
Ahmed Al Salami is next?
Yeah, Hamyar, you're now.
Salami.
Salami.
Hello, my name is Hamyar Al Jamali. I'm a Hamtramck resident and a member of the Women Relations Commission. The reason I stepped up to talk today was to say that I don't support the raising of the LGBTQ flag or any other flag that's not an international flag. City on, that's on city property and the city flag, the flag poles that are on this campus. The resolution that was passed in 2013 clearly states that no other flag other than an international flag shall be raised. That's including LGBT flag, LGBTQ flag, or if I want to raise the Islamic flag or any other flag. So today is just the kind of confirm what was already voted in 2013. So there should not be any discussion on this. But even if we are discussing it, it's, it's very clear. It's already a law, and we're just confirming that law into order again. It's, uh, it never went out of order, or it never went out of, uh, I don't know how you would say it, but it never stopped being in order, or maybe it wasn't enforced, but it should have been enforced. And, uh, I think it was a year ago when they raised their flag, the LGBTQ group, it should have been enforced then. And today we're just kind of confirming what will be enforced in the future, so that it's just clear to everyone and, uh, yeah, that's pretty much it. I think whether you support LGBTQ group or not, it doesn't matter at all. What we're discussing is the legality of any group's flags being flown. And from my understanding, um, it's just to, uh, basically confirm what happened in 2013 and just to make it more clear to everyone. Uh, and I think that one other thing that we should be doing is making it more accessible to anyone. Because I was, I was trying to look up the resolution in 2013. I honestly could not find it until I had to ask the mayor and, uh, I think he has the max for it. So I think that we should be making it more clear after, you know, to look it up or if there should be like a, I mean, there might be a system I don't know about, but I think there should be a system to make it more clear to the citizens to find any resolution, um, that agenda minutes and all this, it should be more accessible to citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you Ahmed? Ahmed Al Salami?
Ahmed Al Salami? Ahmed Al Salami?
No?
Next.
Uh, Hameed Ali?
Hameed Ali? Hameed Ali? Hameed?
No Hameed? Uh, Brizet Al Dahin?
Brizet Al Dahin? Brizet Al Dahin?
No? Abdul, Abdul Mu...
Abdul?
Abdul Muhammud.
Abdul Am?
Abdul Am?
No, not Abdul Am! Abdul Am!
Abdul Al, Abdul St Mary! Who's Abdul Am?
No? What about Abdul Alafi, Al Yafi? Abdul Al Yafi? Which one?
Al Yafi.
Am?
No, Abdul Yafi. The M is missing.
نحن نريد الفئة المتحولين في المنطقة بالصدار إنهم سوف يضرن منهم أولادنا وأطفالنا. شكرًا.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He's saying he doesn't want people around his kids because they will be influenced by it.
I have Mohammed, I think it's Atwan or Atwa? Atwan?
Atwa, Mohammed Atwan.
Mohammed Atwan?
Mohammed Atwan, or Atwa, whatever. Atwan, Atwan.
Nothing? Forrest Hughes?
Forrest Hughes?
Forrest Gump?
Forrest Hughes? Forrest Hughes?
Forrest Hughes. Yeah? Three minutes, Forrest.
Hello, my name is Forrest Udes. I am a very proud queer citizen and resident of Hamtramck. First, I want to say to everyone that's here tonight, happy pride. It's Pride Month, it's June, which means that, please don't lapse her, that I shouldn't be at home or at a party celebrating with my queer friends and queer family, and instead I'm here trying to stave off discriminatory attacks against my community. And that's horrible, because I look forward to June all year, because it's a time where I get to feel celebrated and safe, and instead I have to deal with this, which sucks. This resolution is a bold move to disempower me and my fellow queer citizens of this city. And I'm here to speak out against it and speak out against the people who support it. First, I want you all to understand that removing flags from the city property will not diminish the queer population of this city. We're here, we're everywhere, we're living beautiful, joyous, fantastic lives, and you can't make us go away. Removing the symbols that celebrate our existence and pride will only serve to harm our community, especially our youth, who are very vulnerable, and to make Hamtramck a less safe place for us and potentially embolden people in this city to contribute to the rising statistics of violence against our community. If this is your desire through this resolution, shame on you. And if you're ignorant to this reality and this impact of this resolution, shame on you. Speaking of statistics, your resolution has this funny thing. It states that "through the country's flags that are on Joseph Campo, each group quote-unquote is already represented." Let me tell you that of the countries whose flags are flown, at least four of those countries criminalize queerness in various forms through prison or physical punishment. How can you say that those flags sufficiently represent queer citizens of Hamtramck from those countries? In this country, America, whose flag you say sufficiently represents me, a member of the LGBTQ community is three times more likely to attempt suicide. How can you say that that flag represents me? You can pretend that this resolution is meant to protect diversity, but you know very well that all it will do is to encourage discrimination against the LGBTQ community. And I have two last things to say. One, I'm here, I'm a voting citizen, and I have a lot of friends. If you pass this resolution in order to harm my community, I will do everything in my power to make sure that none of you is ever re-elected in this city. And secondly, if this resolution passes and it means that queer pride flags can't be flown on public property, on private property, I will start a fund and fundraise from my friends all over this country to buy as many queer flags as I can and put them on every bit of private property that exists in the city that someone will let me. You can't make us go away. You can't eliminate queerness by eliminating this flag, it will only hurt us. Please don't do this. But either way, there will be pride flags all over this city, one way or another, I promise. Thank you.
Thank you. Hannah, I think it's Manella? Hannah Manella?
Hannah Manella?
You don't have to hold it. Okay, thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Hannah Manella. I've lived in Ham, I lived in Hamtramck a couple years ago, and I had to leave because of housing issues, but I came back because it is, as you all know, one of the most incredible places on this earth. Historically, Hamtramck is and has been a safe haven for immigrants. You all know this. It is one of the only places in the country where displaced folks are not only welcome, but are able to celebrate their cultures and identities. That's what we all love about it. Council members, there is another community that is desperately seeking asylum. Queer and trans people are at extremely high risk for homelessness, murder, suicide, and mental health struggles. Eighty-two percent of transgender folks considered suicide in 2022. And unfortunately, forty percent of those people attempted their life. Whether you believe that gender non-conforming people are valid, I know that you believe in the sanctity of life. LGBTQ young people are a hundred twenty percent more likely to experience being unhoused. Whether you believe being queer is valid, I know you believe everyone deserves a home. You do not have to agree with your neighbor to love and respect them. Bengali, Polish, Pakistani, Yemeni, Ukrainian, white, black, and LGBTQ folks can and have all thrived here for years. This city has never been neutral. It is loving, vibrant, unique, and that is what the pride flag represents. Hamtramck has gone down in history books for its diversity and acceptance. So say no to Resolution 2023-82 and let that legacy continue. Thank you.
Christina Consta?
Christina Sanchez?
She's right here.
Sanchez Christina, hola!
Three minutes.
Three minutes. Oh, so, I'm so sorry, did I know the rules? I just want to see everyone. Oh, I'm so sorry, I've never, I apologize. Tell me the rules, what can I, what can I?
Just face off?
Counting minutes.
What, I can just talk?
If you want to not talk and stay standing there, you're more than welcome, but you stay behind the podium and address the council.
Okay, I gotta address the counselor. All these people here, is this who I'm talking to? And the people behind me get to just see the back of my head? It sounds great. I was seventeen years old and I was working in Royal Oak, Michigan. And I came here the first time, and I stopped at the mobile gas station. I was a little scared when I came into town. Then I realized, wow! Oh my, what a beautiful place. So I decided I was gonna move here, and then I decided I was gonna stay here. And then, no work, exit. Work arrived back 2008 with a dream, not only for Hamtramck, but for the state of Michigan, for the film incentive, a new beginning. And I said, anywhere but Hamtramck. Anywhere but Hamtramck, I'll buy property. And guess where I ended up? Right on the main drag, right at the traffic light, right dead center, on accident. One minute? Fifteen years later have gone by. You can find me tonight on, maybe they'll air me, maybe they won't.
This way, please.
I'm, I'll, I know, I'm so sorry. My apologies, I should be taking off my hat, respect. I respect you, you respect me, I eat at your restaurants, we walk the same streets, thirty seconds. Should I put it up for sale? When I came here in 2008, there was a pamphlet on my thing that said, if you're gay, we can't rent to you. So I decided I will buy, and I will rent, and I will house. And I'll open up my house for free for any flag that stands for freedom, love, and compassion. Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Rain Noel?
Rain Noel?
Frank Noel.
I can begin? All right. So, in relation to the resolution on flying pride flags or flags in general, the question to be answered on the resolution of flying pride flags is that of neutrality and diversity. But the higher question here is that of rights, of human rights and identity, of liberty itself. What is the pride flag? But a symbol of a given human community, a community faced every day with countless discriminations and attacks. Unlike with other flags, this is not some kind of banner of the limiting and hatred of peoples and their full flowering and multiplicity. It is, in fact, the symbol of liberation and of many ways, and of the many ways human beings can be. We are speaking here on the rights of people to exist and to be proud of their existence, which when denied a symbol of themselves within government is their erasure and merely a small step on to the way of their genocide. A genocide we see being attempted all across the country. We see an example of this overseas in the banning of flying Palestinian flags in the false state of Israel. Who would deny that the, you know, who here would deny that the banning of flying a flag of your people isn't but a part of the continued attempt at erasing and destroying said Palestinian community and identity? So too now here with the queer community. We have the choice here of standing with human liberty and rights, of flying proudly a flag of our people, or choosing to instead, in some false excuse of neutrality, hide and kowtow to those forces that seek the destruction of our fellow human beings. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, that's all for in-person public comments. I'm gonna start reading emails.
All right.
First one.
Now we want to get through the comments.
Thank you. Council members, my name is Adam, and on April 10th, I started working in the DPW for Hamtramck. I have never fallen in love with a job in a city like I have for Hamtramck. I would like to thank all of the council members, Max and John De Angelis, for making the city such a great place to work, and commend you all for striving to improve and make this a great city, make this great city flourish. Adam Van Toyle? This is Perez Bura. If you think flying a pride flag is special treatment, then you do not deserve a position in public office. You are either cowards, bowing to fascist intimidation, or you're bigots who wish to push the LGBT community back into silence and shame. I hope that some of you have the spine to do what's right for marginalized groups of people who are currently under attack by far-right maniacs that paint us as dangerous sex criminals. How far are you willing to let them go? I have Jacob and Allison Terzold, they sent the exact same emails. I believe their husband and wife saw me read one of them. I want to voice my vehement opposition to Resolution 23-82, the pride flag replicates love, acceptance, and inclusion. These are cornerstone ideals to have any community as diverse as Hamtramck, and the ones we should celebrate, not hide. Allowing the pride flag to fly does not open the doors to hateful, extremist, racist, or homophobic flags. Rather, it is a message that all people are welcome and valued in this community and that those types of exclusionary principles are not represented by city leadership. I beg that you vote against a resolution that would aim to silence the progress made by long-targeted and marginalized groups. The majority of Hamtramck citizens know what it's like to be part of such groups and the damage that is done by acts like these. Thank you for your consideration. Andy Hunt, the only flag that needs to be banned are the Confederate flag and the Nazi flag. The meaning of the pride flag is the exact opposite of the previous mention. What the hell are you thinking, all thinking? Soren Hodder, good evening. I hope this email finds you all well and writing with great concerns regarding the insupposed inability to recognize the difference between flying a flag of a radical or racist organization and flying flags that show solidarity and respect for groups and parts of the diversity of Hamtramck. This idea that the city of Hamtramck has to remove all flags from public buildings that are not the American flag, national flag, POW flag, or the flag of the city of Hamtramck is not conducive to the indicated aim of both neutrality and city unity. It is easy for there to be a process called where flying a flag is approved by the appropriate boards and committees, while also maintaining good order and neutrality when it comes to diverse and racist entities that ask for their flag to be flown. Resolution 23-82 says that the people of various religious groups, ethnicities, and sexual orientation groups are represented by the flag of their nation. I don't think that we can logically agree that this is true. There are 417 anti-LGBT+ pieces of state legislation that are being considered at this moment in this country. You are twice as likely to be murdered by the police if you are black than if you are white in this country. Where is the representation of ethnicity and of sexual orientation in the American flag? Flying a flag for a specific group is much more than just putting the flag up and singling it out. That group of people, it is singling out that group of people. It is about highlighting that the group of people are supported and loved by their government. It is about visibility, it is about much more than just the flag flying. It is about the thirty-eight people who were murdered last year for not conforming to their assigned gender adverse. It is about the unity and recognition of uplifting those voices. Choosing to not fly a flag due to the fear of a slippery slope towards radical and racist groups asking for their flags to be flown is not the answer in the face of bigotry and state-sanctioned violence across the world. The opportunity exists here to ensure that Hamtramck remains a welcoming and open place for people of all ethnicities, of all sexual orientations, of all religions. Choosing to avoid the opportunity to say no to racist groups is detrimental to the unity and good order of the city of Hamtramck. Thank you for reading. Catherine Fasco, my name is Catherine Fasco, and I regularly participate in activities class to contribute economically, at least on a weekly, more, often more basis, to the Hamtramck economy. I'm extremely disturbed by hearing of the resolution that will be up for discussion pertaining to the banning of LGBTQ+ pride flags. As a member of the LGBTQ community and a frequent patron of the city of Hamtramck and its businesses, I am horrified, offended, and extremely angered by this. Every human deserves to feel safe, not only where they live, but everywhere they go. How many of your residents do you wish to see targeted by that anti-LGBT+ bigotry? How many hate crimes do you want to encourage? Because this is exactly what you are doing with this. This is absolutely infringing on your residents' First Amendment rights, on top of discriminating against an already targeted community. Stop persecuting the LGBTQ+ community under the guise of inclusion. You aren't fooling anyone. Sincerely, Catherine Fasco. Sean Bizink, hi there. I have been a Hamtramck resident for over half a decade now, and I have loved living in such diverse and welcoming community. By banning this flag, you spit on every idea, you spit on the very idea of tolerance and acceptance. I'm going to keep this short, because I think if you are small-minded enough to enact this change, you aren't going to be willing to listen to any reason anyway. Just know that people like me see through your bigotry, and I'll encourage whoever I can to vote you out on the next election. I will, oh, definitely, I'll let you know. Sage Sherlock? Hello, I think it would be horrible not, not only for our immediate community, but also for the National Eye of the wonderful city of Hamtramck to ban the pride flag. That's backwards. Y'all don't know, y'all don't want to do that. Do you know how many lawsuits you would have on your hands? Also, it would really send a message that the city is not a safe place for queer people. Don't go down the bigoted road, you're better than that. This is from Jen Cecil. To whom it may concern, I'm writing this email to share my perspective on Resolution 23-82. As a frequent international visitor of your city, Hamtramck, I'm from a small town in Ontario, Canada. It was over a year ago that I was first introduced to Hamtramck. Friends brought me to a soccer match at Keyworth Stadium, and I'll be honest, I knew nothing about soccer at the time. Yet I immediately felt a new world open up to me, and it wasn't the sport that drew me in, it was the community, your community. Since then, I've been, I've made dozens of trips to Hamtramck, and this year I even purchased seasons because of DCFC for both me and my best friend. We like to meet up with our other friends at Folding Warehouse before DCFC matches, shop at the merch tents, and enjoy food from one of the many food trucks at Keyworth Stadium. Sometimes we find somewhere nearby, like the Painted Lady Lounge, to grab a drink or a bite to eat with friends after. What made this community so special to me was feeling safe. What told me I was safe was seeing pride flags, like the ones in Keyworth Stadium or Zussman Park. It let me know that I was sharing space with people who were ready and willing to see me, include me, and stand up for me in the face of hatred or opposition. For the first time in my life, I could stand in a crowd and not hide. I could meet new people and make friends as my true self, a queer, asexual woman who just wants to love and be loved, the same as everybody else. Cities all over the US have pride flags hanging on street poles and parks, schools, and other publicly owned properties. schools, and other publicly-owned properties, and that attracts visitors like me and my friends. It makes me feel safe to visit. It tells me the majority of the individuals voting on matters such as this have the courage and willingness to stand against exclusionary and hateful vitriol that homophobia and transphobia are comprised of, and often lends itself to other issues like racism, sexism, xenophobia. Seeing pride flags on publicly-owned spaces makes me want to celebrate those cities as safe, inclusionary, and welcoming to people from all walks of life. Hamtramck happens to be the one I visit and celebrate most frequently on an almost weekly basis. Hamtramck's acceptance and inclusionary standards are and have been very much so part of our international character, and I ask that you vote accordingly. Please vote against the resolution, vote against what it stands for and the harmful message it will send to your residents and your visitors. If you are neutral in situations of injustice, this is a quote, "You have chosen the side of the oppressor." Uh, thank you, Jen C. Norman Rothwell, Norm Rothwell, Rothwell. While I am not currently resident of your fair city, is an area I'm strongly considering buying a house in over the next few, couple of years. I spend a lot of time in Hamtramck right now, mainly attending DCFC matches. Like you say in your statement regarding this resolution, Hamtramck is a city that seeks to embrace diversity, that includes people from all walks of life. As a queer person myself, I can assure that, assure you that this is the way I was born. I spent a lot of time dealing with family and friends who told me that being queer is not okay. It's a sin against God. This did not make me any less queer. Being queer is not a choice, is how I was born. Seeing pride flags flown in our city tells me that this is a place I can feel welcome and safe in. To ban pride flags would do exactly the opposite of what you claim to do in seeking out diversity and inclusion in our city. And if it is indeed symbols of hate that you are worried about flooding your city, focus on removing symbols that represent the hate and not the symbols that represent love and inclusion. You do not fight hate by denouncing love. It is only through embracing love and understanding that you can eradicate hate. So I ask you to embrace said love so that people like myself can continue to feel welcomed in your city and you can further add to your diversity. Thank you, Norman Rothwell. Dustin Bowie, I would like to submit public comment. In regards to Hamtramck not wanting to open the doors for radical racist groups asking to fly their flags by denying the ability to fly the pride flag implies that the city believes that the LGBTQ+ community is on the same level as the radical or racist groups. The city seems to want to, want the authority to deny specific flags, and if it were to exercise that power, I believe it should do so on ones that stem from hatred and prejudice instead of inclusiveness and diversity. Denying the pride flag, a flag of love and inclusiveness, would set an uninviting tone across the city. Please don't shrink the duty of handling radical and racist groups by throwing a handle-all blanket over every group. It is the entire community's job to oust hatred and create a welcoming environment. Will Shulaq, I am a regular patron of Hamtramck Business and is an establishment, and this new resolution is absolutely sickening. It's very obvious that this new law stems out of homophobia and hatred. I sincerely hope that you know how many people you will negatively impact by your blind hatred and bigotry. Best, Will Shulaq. Anton Filjaya, I recently saw that there was a resolution trying to ban the pride flags from public places in Hamtramck. Please don't ban the pride flag from public places. It really makes the city a beacon for diverse, diverse thought and helping art thrive here. I moved here five years ago in 2018 because I'm a musician and producer who plays often here in Hamtramck, and since 2019, I have owned a house on Plinger. I love the diversity and artist community that lived here and has always been a staple of Hamtramck. I am proud, I am a proud first-generation Ukrainian immigrant as well as being bisexual, therefore a member of the LGBT community. Hamtramck has always had a rich artist community, which often includes many members of the LGBT community. This art brings a lot of revenue and patrons for the city who inhabit our venues, bars, galleries, restaurants, and shops. I chose to make Hamtramck my home for the last five years, and I feel at home when I see the pride flags along Joseph Compoel Street. I'm proud to be a part of this place. Again, please don't ban these flags from our public space. It would be a huge disservice to the people who bring a lot of revenue and culture to the city we call home. Justin Bierra, that you are passing this resolution on the sale of pride flags when LGBTQIA+ flags are overwhelmingly flown, and in which the Hamtramck Council has declined and resisted officially flying any pride flags or making any statement of support speaks volumes. The community will see this for what it is, a coward display and a refusal to stand in support of those in our community who are most vulnerable, especially in these times. The council is choosing to tolerate and, in effect, help cultivate objective intolerance of LGBTQ individuals, and as Karl Popper has taught us, this is a deplorable action. Jason Portier, word it any way you want, the anti-pride flag resolution is repressive, period. Homophobic, bigoted, outdated, disgraceful. Ashley Hughes, please do not make it legal to fly pride flags on public property. This resolution is absolutely the cowardly thing to do. All it does is suppress the voice of the LGBTQ+ community, a group of people that is already under attack from so many other places. Don't be another area of suppression and hate. I implore you to think about your own identities and what it would feel like for you if you were in the shoes of the LGBTE+ community. Don't be in the wrong side of history. Don't support the hate. Stand up to the hate. Stand up to the bullies. Be brave. Thanks. Greg Tilly, I'm now going to address you with respectful title because you and your local authoritative community have felt the need to diminish others with your ideologies. I've long been a prominent and champion of the Middle Eastern community, proponent and champion of the Middle Eastern community in the Detroit area. My wife's family is Lebanese, and now so are my children. I've been exposed to many great things as a result of different cultures coming together with mutual respect. So why, I ask myself, would your local government look to destroy that mutual respect? Make no mistake, you're afforded respect in this country only when you give it. Your community has been given a great deal of respect locally. Don't make the mistake of thinking people will tolerate a collective intolerance based on some disgusting religious basis. It's a lack of respect in most cases. In this case, however, it is most incredibly ignorant and 100% stupid. It ruins years of assimilation and creates a divide. I choose to invest a little of my time and money every year attending soccer games and patronizing other local companies in Hamtramck. I can tell you that those days will be done for me if you choose to ban the pride flag, and I'll push to have DCFC leave your town and everything they've brought to the neighborhood. Make the right decision, prove you can do it right by everyone, not just the loudest religious zealot. Justin Carver, I have been a resident of Hamtramck for nearly 10 years. One of the reasons I choose to live here as well as raise my daughter here is because I value the city's vibrance, diversity, and representations of what America is, a melting pot of cultures, creeds, colors, and beliefs. We should embrace freedom of expression so long as it is not hateful and ostracizing. I am very ashamed to see the city I love trying to shut out pride flags due to fear of offending people. I sincerely hope the city reconsideres Hispanic knowledge and the diversity of the city they represent. I take issue, this is from Joseph Strazka. I take issue with the proposed resolution regarding flying of the flags flown on public property and encourage you to do, to vote no. I take issue with the statement, each religious, ethnic, racial, political, or sexual orientation group is already represented by the country it belongs to. This statement is confusing as it is unclear what is meant by represented by the country it belongs to. This is made even more complicated by the addition of the verbiage "nations' flags" that represent the international character of our city. Is the intent of the council to limit flags to the 193 countries that are member states of the United Nations? Or does it also include the two non-member observer states of the Holy See and the State of Palestine? As the US doesn't recognize the State of Palestine, would the council support the flying of Palestinian flag contrary to the US foreign policy? Then there's an issue of, then there's the issue of Taiwan. Taiwan is not recognized as a nation, however, it does have a flag. Does the council believe that the People's Republic of China adequately represents the people of Taiwan? Or should the Taiwanese flag be allowed to be flown? If the intent of the council to allow a Palestinian or Taiwanese flag to be flown, what is the position of other so-called nations not recognized by the US, such as Somalia, Tanzania, Abkhazia? I, I'm not going to waste time trying to pronounce these. The second and perhaps more concerning issue is the idea that these groups are represented by the country they belong to. The United States is the leader in promoting the rights of LGBTQ+ people around the world. This is because many countries criminalize homosexual behavior. A list of those countries can be found here, and he included a link. In fact, homosexual behavior is 13 of those countries can be punished by death, including Saudi Arabia, Yemen, Iran, and Somalia. The execution of homosexuals is a real issue, as demonstrated by the estimated over 7,000 people executed in Iran who were suspected of being homosexual, as well as reports of suspected homosexuals thrown off of rooftops to their deaths in Syria. Given these facts, I do not think that homosexual minorities are adequately represented in the countries they belong to, nor do I think the council does either. I understand that flying flags representing minority groups can lead to uncomfortable conversations for everyone involved. Given the treatment of minority groups around the world, I particularly, particular sexual minorities who are subject to execution, perhaps these uncomfortable conversations need to be had, and the flying of flags representing those groups will facilitate those conversations. I would like to end by stating Hamtramck is a great community and has always welcomed the disenfranchised, this live and, this live and let live attitude is one of the reasons Hamtramck survives today while the surrounding communities have struggled. Resolutions of this nature regarding the flying of public flags do nothing to advance the issues that really matter to residents, such as crime, speeding, litter, and roads. Those issues would only be solved by residents working together, not by pitting groups against each other, by poorly wording resolutions regarding the flying of flags. I strongly encourage the council to reject this resolution and concentrate on issues that matter most to us residents. Sincerely, George. Hi, my name is Ahmed Ali, living on Home Street. First and important note, I would like to, I would also like to inform you that many of the email comments that you get and read from the emails are from those living outside of the city. We saw a few campaigns from the opposition to get their allies to send comments when they don't even live here. I'm writing this to inform my support for Resolution 2382 to maintain and conform the neutrality of the city of Hamtramck towards its residents. I would like to thank Councilman Hassan, the rest of the council members, and the mayor in getting this done. The city should not be in a position to pick sides and flags besides the US state, city, country flags on government property. Please listen to the people who actually show up to the meetings and are part of the community, not those who live outside of it. Thank you. Kelsey Dervinsky, I'm writing to submit my opinion on the resolution that will be voted on tonight to maintain the neutrality and confirm the neutrality of the city of Hamtramck towards its residents. As a resident and voter, I oppose the resolution. I presume the resolution will prevent the city from flying the pride flag at City Hall. I understand the language of the resolution aims to prevent radical or racist flags to be flown, but the city ultimately has the choice in the matter, and this isn't the case of a slippery slope situation. The pride flag is more than just a flag for the LGBT community. It's a symbol that the city welcomes and is a place of safety for all people. By removing the flag, the city is making a choice against their representation. Thank you. Kira Thomas, I live on Norwalk Street, and I do not agree with banning the pride flag, especially during the month of Pride. All should be accepted everywhere and always. Alex Meyer, I am Alex, my family's Polish-American and has lived in Detroit and Hamtramck since the 1930s. Hamtramck has always been an oasis of multiculturalism in the metro area. This resolution is a threat to the multiculturalism that makes Hamtramck a role model for other cities across the nation. LGBTQ people not only are part of their, are part of every immigrant and ethnic community, but offer distinct cultural contributions to our communities as well, particularly in the arts, health field, and education. This resolution is divisive at a time when our communities are under real threats like austerity, budgeting, gun violence, and a cost of living crisis. It does not demonstrate respect for the inherent dignity of all people. It objectifies LGBTQ people and pretends that a rainbow flag stands for only, stands only for sex when it symbolizes, when it is a symbol of cultural resilience, resistance to the state violence, and a recognition of a community's history. Please vote no for this resolution. It is a threat to the multiculturalism and love across the board as it makes Hamtramck a greater American city. Christina Toscano, as a Hamtramck resident since 2017, I have always loved the city and celebrated its true diversity unlike anywhere I've ever lived. Until, only until recently do I feel homophobia and disrespect seeping into local government under the guise of respecting diversity and religious differences. Is respect only allowed for the citizens who hold the majority? The emboldened disrespect to the LGBTQ+ community who don't conform to the majority of citizens' religious beliefs is outstanding hypocrisy. Considering those same people stood alongside the religious majority to empower their beliefs not long ago, I would hate to see the city I once dearly enjoyed nationally embarrass itself in the eyes of Michigan and the United States because of its hypocritical lack of empathy and respect to the diversity it's known for. Do better for all citizens, not just the majority. Elizabeth Stapleton, I'm a Hamtramck resident and a member of the LGBTQ+ community is beyond offensive that the mayor and city council compared the pride flag to Nazi and white supremacists. The pride flag is a symbol of our existence and the love that we have for our community. The resolution proposal said that we will be represented by our country. However, currently in the USA, state governments are trying to oppress the transgender members of our community more than ever. The effect of these actions and the message they send has caused the murder rate of transgender people to double. The USA flag does not represent me as a queer person because a large part of the USA hates and wants to oppress my existence. It saddens me to learn that Hamtramck, my home, is a part of that group. Please address this resolution as it sends a message of hate and oppression to our LGBTQ residents. George Elkine, as a longtime Hamtramck resident, homeowner of the area and advisory member of the city's Arts and Culture Commission, I'd like to register my opposition to the passage of Resolution 2382. While talking around what explicitly it seeks to ban, the resolution clearly aims to remove any existing signs of LGBTQ+ support on city property while suggesting that such affirmative displays are aligned with radical or racist sentiments. This could not be further from the truth, treating LGBTQ+ rights as a subject for reasonable debate itself, a reactionary, regressive position. And removing flags and pride displays in private businesses and public spaces has been a project of right-wing racist and anti-immigrant activists throughout the past year. This move will only embolden them to demand more. This alignment of anti-LGBTQ+ with conservative forces is not a coincidence. All those who attack or erase the leads in rights of society's most valuable are taking part in the same regressive project. Not flying a flag again over City Hall is one thing, but banning such displays going forward is an entirely different matter, and one which may fly legally afoul of the state's recent amendment to ELCRA. At present, LGBTQ+ rights across the country are under attack, and flags on private property, even with Hamtramck, have been met with targeted acts of vandalism. LGBTQ+ rights are far from safe in Michigan and with Hamtramck and within Hamtramck. And to suggest this proposition is neutral is to promulgate any absolutely flagrant falsehood. By no stretch are members of the community covered by state, national, or other flags. This variety of representation is and remains important in making our city and world more accepting, free environments. Please do not take this step to make Hamtramck a more reactionary, less tolerant, and deeply divided place. It accomplishes nothing will result in harm to members of our community, a community made up of diverse people. Council, city, council, mayor, and city of Hamtramck are all meant, and I'd argue, bound to serve. Sincerely, George. Elizabeth Allen, my name is Elizabeth Allen, and I thought I am, and although I'm not a resident of Hamtramck, I spend a great deal of time and money on local Hamtramck businesses and events. And proposed resolution to limit flags flown on public properties is a clear and obvious violation of free speech. The resolution's assertion that it does not violate the free speech of individuals, of businesses, and the city is false, damaging and frankly insulting to the residents and participants in the community. The assertion that each religious, ethnic, racial, political, and sexual-oriented group is already represented by the country it belongs to is also demonstrably false in an era where governing entities are actively attempting to legislate marginalized groups out of existence. The increase in hate speech and anti-LGBTQ+ sentiments, both in Hamtramck and across the nation, make community organizing and solidarity vital to the continued existence of marginalized community members, many of whom are deeply involved in the betterment of Hamtramck. And flags are an important, visible marker of that solidarity. Erasing the visibility of Hamtramck's queer community will only embolden those who seek to erase us from existence. Hamtramck's strength lies in its diversity of residents and community participants as it's clear from the resolution allowance towards the international character of the city. The city of Hamtramck exists to support its constituents, and any celebration of the diversity of the city will bring hollow of its residents if its residents are reduced only to their countries of origin. Given that the mandate of the city government is to support the safety and well-being of its citizens, the government of Hamtramck would do far better to alert residents of actual impending threats such as the recent incinerator implosion than spending their taxpayer-funded time attempting to police their community through unconstitutional resolutions. Thank you for your time. Gordon Widener, Hamtramck's best aspect is the open arms with which it welcomes the world. Adopting this resolution would signal that our city is now against its history, only interested in supporting some of its residents instead of all, only interested in some of its visitors instead of all, and actively discouraging businesses from taking place in the city. Make no mistake, all flags are political. Whether the US flag, other nations' flags, and state flags, all of these have something to say. With the resolution as presented, you have the tendency to find what the city flag also stands for is a commitment to accepting all of your residents and visitors and the contributions to our community. If that most American, if that most American ideals is what you wish to affirm, you cannot in good conscience support this resolution. Thank you. Mark Navarro, I'm writing today in opposition of Resolution 2382 for the city of Hamtramck, which would ban the flying of non-national flags from Hamtramck city property. The fact that the resolution is The fact that the resolution is even consideration is a disgrace to the welcoming community that Hamtramck is. Hamtramck is one of the most diverse cities in Michigan, and that diversity extends beyond national origin. People from all different gender identities and sexual orientations call Hamtramck home, or find refuge and community in Hamtramck where they are accepted, loved, and cared for by residents, businesses, and organizations alike. By not allowing pride flags to fly on the city property is a direct message to those groups that the city government undermines their presence. While not a resident of Hamtramck, I spend a great deal of time, money in the city. I have seen a vast number of local businesses be accepting and welcoming to all members of the LGBTQ plus community. Even walking down the street, I see pride flags proudly displayed from homes, businesses, and other institutions. For the city government to not participate in showing love and humanity to the LGBTQ plus community would be shameful and against the rich diversity of Hamtramck. June is LGBTQ plus Pride Month, a time when members of the community are uplifted, celebrated, and honored. But this year, pride takes on a deeper meaning as anti-queer and anti-trans legislation is passed nationwide, sending the message to the LGBTQ plus community that they are not wanted or welcomed in certain parts of the country by outright banning pride flags on city property. The city is sending a similar message to the LGBTQ plus community in and around Hamtramck. At a time when LGBTQ plus people fear for their lives and their safety, Hamtramck should show they are welcome in the community. By actively and openly banning flying pride flags on our city property, you would be sending the opposite message. I hope the council will do the right thing and vote this resolution down. It is a disgrace to the diversity, community, and reputation of Hamtramck. At a time when queer and trans people are under attack in this country, Hamtramck should be loudly and proudly showing that members of the LGBTQ plus community are loved and welcomed in the city, be the neighbors, friends, business owners, or patrons, or anyone else looking to find a home and a community in Hamtramck. Best, Mark Navarro. Sam Griffin, I'd like to comment on the resolution banning the flying of pride flags on public property in Hamtramck, which I find to be incredibly disheartening. The case for pride flags is made in the first line of the resolution. Quote, "The city of Hamtramck is one of the most diverse cities in the United States in which we should proudly promote diversity," end quote. LGBTQ plus people are not only a part of the diversity, their contribution to our city are something to be proud of too. And then second quote, "Whereas each religious, ethnic, racial, political, and sexual orientation group is already represented by the country it belongs to," is patently false. According to this study, Yemen is one of the most unsafe countries for LGBTQ travelers because homosexual activity is punishable by lashes and years in jail. LGBTQ plus Yemenis are not represented by their government. Additionally, anti-LGBTQ plus legislation has been passed recently in Poland and Hungary as part of a wider anti-gay movement in Eastern Europe. Therefore, queer people from the two most prominent nationalities in Hamtramck are potentially safer here in Hamtramck than they are in the countries where their families immigrated from. Sadly, that does not mean that they are welcome here in the United States, where the Human Rights Campaign has recently released a warning and a guidebook on staying safe in the USA as a LGBTQ person. In a climate where hostility towards a group is the norm, neutrality towards that position only serves as the cosigning of the ongoing violence and oppression. Does Hamtramck wish to participate in this trend of alienating, threatening, and punishing members of the LGBTQ plus community? Or does it wish to embrace our diversity as touted in our model, the world in two square miles? The world has always and always will include queer people. So let's please allow those here who wish to assert the LGBTQ plus people are welcome here to do so. This naive radical stance is simply one of acceptance which fits in so well with our identity as Hamtramckans. Thank you. Sincerely, Samantha Griffin. Paul Wesbucki, I would like to have this come, please, esteemed members of the city council and members of the community. I write to you today to address Resolution 2382 and advocate for an inclusive and welcoming environment for all residents of the city of Hamtramck. First and foremost, I want to acknowledge and appreciate the city of Hamtramck for its rich diversity. The community is a tapestry of different cultures, religions, ethnicities, and identities, and is something we should be proud of. Embracing this diversity not only strengthens the fabric of our city, but also showcases our commitment to equity and fairness. However, I must express my concerns regarding the limitations set forth in this resolution. While I understand the intent behind this resolution, there is a clear difference between intent and the impact of this policy. I believe it is crucial to emphasize the importance of visibility and representation at the community level. Our city should be a place where everyone feels seen, valued, and heard. These qualities are what vibrant and successful communities are based upon. Aforementioned value can have a positive effect on community members' mental health throughout inclusivity and empowerment. By limiting the display of flags to only the American flag and those representing the international character of our city, we inadvertently silence the voices and experience of certain groups within our community, which research demonstrates is detrimental to mental health as well as community engagement. Frankly, people do not want to contribute or be seen in places where they are silenced and feel discriminated against. We must remember that visibility matters. For many individuals, especially from those marginalized communities, seeing symbols that represent their identity can be incredibly empowering. It sends a message of acceptance and inclusion, fostering a sense of belonging and pride. By allowing flags that represent various religious, ethnic, racial, political, and sexual orientation groups to be flown in our public property, we demonstrate our commitment to embracing the diverse identity of our residents. Furthermore, this resolution should not be seen as opening the door for radical or racist groups. We can establish clear guidelines and criteria for the flags that can be displayed, ensuring that they align with our community values of inclusivity, respect, and non-discrimination. By actively engaging with our residents and seeking their input, we can create a framework that accelerates diversity while guarding against any potential misuse of this privilege. While it may be uncomfortable for some residents to view a pride flag, silencing voices of marginalized and oppressed communities is detrimental and fundamentally unsafe. There is a course of separation between church and state that along with the recent amendment to the Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act Agreement, will guarantee many minority people population rights in Michigan. While this resolution does not perhaps violate the letter of the law, it certainly impedes on the spirit of it. Let us be a city that takes a stand for equity, not just in words, through our actions. Equality by itself does not alone produce progress. It is each according to their need in a time of history where LGBT members are being actively oppressed and need for visibility and paramount. By allowing the display of flags representing different religious, ethnic, racial, political, and sexual orientation groups, we send a powerful message of unity and support. Couple sentences I can't read, you read, oh, two minutes, four minutes.
Bring some water.
Yeah, let us be, by allowing the display of flags representing different religious, ethnic, racial, political, and sexual orientation groups, we send a powerful message of unity, support. We've become a city where all individuals, regardless of their background, can feel proud of their identity and confident in their place within our community. Together, let us choose a path that celebrates the beauty of diversity, promotes visibility, and prioritizes representation at a community level. By doing so, we create a city that is not only welcoming, but also serves as a shining example of progress and exclusivity. Tammy Borck, is with deep feeling about trauma on drone adult behaviors, people serving positions of power in your neighborhood hub. I stress the word "serve." As a business owner in Detroit, I'm embarrassed of such terrifying politics and policymaking with glaring signs of Hitler-era thinking and acting. It changes my view on doing business in Hamtramck, where the patron of your local businesses. This radical decision affects absolutely everyone's family, everyone's friends, everyone's colleagues, everyone. Tammy Borck. Dr. Vitas Malash, I think that's how you pronounce it, I apologize. I'm writing out of concern regarding a recent Hamtramck city resolution seeking to ban the flying of a pride flag for international display. Upfront, I will acknowledge that I am not a resident of the city of Hamtramck. I am a Michigan native living in Florida, who regularly visits, regular vacations in the Detroit area. Hamtramck's day must visit destinations for me for excellent culture and nightlife. I am a DCFC supporter, and my matchday experience always involves a leisurely day spent visiting Hamtramck businesses and spending time with the city's residents. To put it simply, Hamtramck is one of my favorite places on earth, but it is one of my favorite places because it is a spirit of openness and inclusion. I've heard the argument that allowing the pride flag will somehow open the floodgates for all sorts of other flags to be flown. I would quote that this is where the city can take a stand, to embrace the paradox of tolerance, let love win the day, and to make clear that banners celebrating love, inclusion, equity, and diversity will be allowed while those imposing, suspending contrary values, hate, oppression, and inclusion will be banned. The opportunity to demonstrate that Hamtramck is a city so full of love that it has no room for hate, I ask that you please allow the pride flags to be flown without restrictions to let those most in need of welcome know that they have a home in Hamtramck. Thank you. Elizabeth Stara, I am an active member of the Planet and Community and frequent Hamtramck on a regular basis. I love the diversity and welcoming nature of Hamtramck. Banning the pride flag would be a colossal mistake, going against the very nature of what the city stands for, acceptance, diversity, community. It would send a message to both Hamtramck residents and visitors that discrimination is praised when really it should be reprimanded. What do you want Hamtramck to stand for? Veronica Sawyer, I am writing to express my opinion on Resolution 2382. The city should allow the pride flag to be flown on public property. Firstly, with the passing of the resolution, the city would be opening itself up to potential First Amendment violations and thus challenges to said resolution. I highly doubt that the city of Hamtramck, its residents, or its businesses want the negative publicity and costs associated with that potential controversy. But more importantly, I think that banning the flag would be very hypocritical on the part of Hamtramck, not to mention that it sends a decidedly non-inclusive message to a significant number of the city's residents and frequent visitors. If Hamtramck truly values its diversity, then permitting the display of pride flags on public property is a no-brainer. On the other hand, if the city and its loudest voices are truly committed to banning the flag display, then no reasonable person will consider Hamtramck a truly inclusive city. This issue is personal to me. Although I'm not a resident of Hamtramck, I do visit the city frequently, approximately once a week. In the past, I have worked in the city, but if Hamtramck decides to ban the pride flag, I'm going to reconsider those visits, the money I spend in the city, and the good words for Hamtramck regularly express. I would hate to think I've been misled all these years by empty rhetoric about the city's commitment to diversity. Thank you for your time and attention. Veronica Sawyer. Jackson Boyd, as a resident of Hamtramck, I'm emailing to let you know that I whole heartedly disagree with the banning of the pride flag on city property. It goes against the ethos of what Hamtramck stands for. Everyone is welcome, no matter where you come from or what your background is. Thank you for your time, Jackson Boyd. Sean Mann, please mind the attached letter, humbly submitting in regards to... I think he had a letter. I'll look it up. I don't know if there's an attachment to that email. Valerie Stevens?
How many more?
I think I've gone through a lot of them, though. I'm okay for now. I'm okay for now.
Well, can we take?
Who's saying that's enough? Everybody's saying if it was your comment, you wouldn't say it was enough.
No, no.
Five-minute break, okay?
Yeah, we'll take it. We said five minutes.
Eleanor? Yeah, we called you. Yeah, I'll let you in.
Oh, sorry.
You need to take a seat next to my car.
Just a commercial.
They can't say they're not a problem.
We can say respect is there, whatever. Keep it in perspective, for sure.
They can't say they're...
They're trying really hard to make this up.
We got major.
...that we have for her, we all know that this is not reality of 2023 in America. Having read the proposal, you cannot with a straight face argue that all minorities are equally represented and supported by flying their flags country. My daughter and the rest of the LGBTQIA community are unequivocally not represented by the American flag when there are several states within the Union that are trying to legislate them out of support, out of crucial Medicare care, and frankly, out of existence. There have been over 520 anti-LGBTQIA bills proposed to state legislator this year alone. We are only halfway through the year. If you need any further reminder of how real and violent hate against LGBTQIA+ communities still is, this meeting tonight is occurring the day after the University of the Pulse nightclub massacre. When even the White House is flying the pride flag to show solidarity while the country tears into the LGBTQIA+ community, I do not think the president would agree with council's proposal that everyone is equally represented under the American flag. Saying that you want to ban the pride flag because you're too afraid to stand up to white supremacy or other radical group who may demand a flag be flown is a piss poor excuse. And if you are too cowardly to say no to extremists, then you have no business running the city or composing its legislation. Do better. This community deserves better from you, a city that deserves to be on the right side of history. John Selvich, hello, my name is John Selvich. I have been a resident of Hamtramck since May of 2013. In these past 10 years, I have been both happy and proud to claim Hamtramck as my home. As with great regret that I feel shame for this town I love so much due to Resolution 2382, which is unquestionably a veiled attack of discrimination against our LGBTQ+ residents. What twists the knife even deeper in this attack is that it is these residents, ones that experience prejudice and hate consistently in their own lives, who have raised and continue to raise their voices so loudly against Islamophobia over the years to help their Muslim brothers and sisters to feel safe, secure, and welcome in their migration to Hamtramck. To each city council member who votes yes on Resolution 2382, you know that this is an act of utter betrayal and hypocrisy, an act that actually defines sinful behavior in complete contrast to the celebration of diversity and inclusion that the pride flag beautifully represents. Francisco Olivero, I am writing to this to let whoever know that I wish to petition the banning of the business pride flags. Amy Nicole, I am part of the LGBTQ community. I spend quite a bit of time in Hamtramck. I frequent your restaurants. I worked in one of your dispensaries. I bring people in when I throw events at the local art gallery. I promote bands who play on the sanctuary with my magazine. I promote the events at the New Dodge to my Instagram audience, share the attendance shows at Smalls. Hell, I even went to the DCFC game just to support the city and documented when Weta Ko painted that mural to promote them. We are a big part of your community, whether we live there or not, and it is not a crime to love who you love. With your stance in not hanging a pride flag, not only is it a coward's move, the fear of upsetting a few sidelines, those who continue to be marginalized and put in danger, but it's also a signal from our office and its elected, keyword elected officials that you choose to disregard us. And in doing so, prove to us that you don't want to cheer, respect, or protect our community even when you were a big part of it, a big part of yours. If our community cannot feel safe within the parameters of your city, why should we bother to pump our hardworking dollars into your institutions? Why should we move to the city, pay taxes to you when you clearly are taking a stand in how you feel about the collective us? I hope my word makes you understand the severity of this, even if it's just to threaten your bottom line. Do better, Hamtramck. Take a stand for love and protection of people who love your city. And if not, well, we'll go elsewhere. Thank you for your time. Sam Strum, I spend time in Hamtramck roughly every day, every other week as a dedicated supporter of Detroit City FC. This proposal is not only a clear violation of the First Amendment, but even being put forth on the table is a blow to many of the closest friends who also love the city. People who have been coming to Hamtramck for years, spending time in the community, spending their money at your businesses. People who have stood against the hate groups your bill claims to be bullwork against. We have long said that the Hamtramck is a diverse city that stands for inclusion and that they love. This proposal will not withstand the challenge in the courts. This proposal will only hurt those who have fallen in love with Hamtramck and drive them further from feeling safe there. I urge you to reconsider vote no on this proposal and stance for the diversity it claims to represent. Help my friends to continue to feel safe in Hamtramck and keep the love they've had for this wonderful city. Respectfully, Sam. Amanda Jakowski, hi everyone. Amanda J., Hamtramck resident. Everything on this agenda at least makes sense. Yay, street sweepers. Except for Resolution 2382. I highly suggest postponing this vote to evaluate how far reached this resolution effect would be. I fear passing this would be counterproductive to the state of goal and would squash any uniqueness and diversity that we have fostered over the decades in the city. Does this mean no Christmas or Eid decorations could be displayed by the DDA during holidays? Does this mean no more parking, special parking during the holidays? An area where Hamtramck has recently made steps to be inclusive, but still provides special treatment to Christian and Muslim holidays? Is racial, including Black Americans, who do not always know their country origin because they were stolen from there? And the people indigenous to the area, including in racial or ethnic, or would they be considered a nation? Would this resolution have prohibited last year's beautiful rededication of the colonial Hamtramck grave site? There were many more flags that are specific in this document on display there. Furthermore, are you saying that you are going to monitor employees' cell phone and social media use while at work? Who would be responsible for determining and monitoring the protected time, manner, and place? I do know that attention was paid to early social media commentary as the updated version posted on 6/12 reflects many of those issues. But there is far too many questions to pass this today with any semblance of responsibility. Thank you for listening. Claire Nawaf Boyd, I am a Hamtramck resident adding my voice to the many saying we strongly support flying the pride flag in public space in our town. At this point, you drag up this hateful debate every single year, spending the city's time and resources on your personal homophobia. It's clear the people of Hamtramck want to fly the pride flag. Our city wants to show our beautiful colors, but it seems like it's our electeds who are showing your true colors instead, not a good look. Alonso Rubio, as a frequent visitor and nearby resident to the great city of Hamtramck, I am deeply saddened and disappointed that decisions to ban the pride flag are a discussion, a flag which represents peace, harmony, and solidarity amongst people within our own community. A flag that deserves every way to be waved high and mighty over a city that is proud and known for its diversity. I hope that the city council person that reads this will find peace and love in their hearts and choose not to close off a community that has helped and will continue to help the city of Hamtramck grow and prosper. Jo Higgins, I'm someone who grew up in this area and I'm now raising two children on my own. It has come to my attention that a misguided attempt to patriotism has been proposed as course of action to the great city of Hamtramck. A proposal that while purportedly celebrating the diversity and representation within the city of Hamtramck and entire your nation, would proceed to infringe on this or disregard the freedom of expression belonging to those citizens and residents. The United States government has protected the rights of all people to freely express their beliefs and opinions and peaceful methods, including banners, symbols, and flags. Your beliefs, opinions, and how you choose to live your life are protected along with your rights to assemble and associate with many other people. While better legal scholars than I might be able to find a way wherein it is legal that the city of Hamtramck may ban certain symbols or flags, even that they have to admit that doing so is in spite of the spirit of the law. The rationale that this motion is an attempt to circumvent any hateful group from attempting to display any flag of their own brings to mind old quotes from legal scholars and Supreme Court justices about the price of a free society. This motion frankly feels un-American because it reads as a craven attempt to censor free speech and undermine one of the greatest strengths of our shared American culture. The context of this motion causes it to feel as a reactionary attempt to ban the LGBTQ+ flag or similar flags with broad strokes under the guise of protecting the public from hate groups, which would be both disingenuous and cowardly. The LGBTQ+ flag on display only expresses that everyone has the right to feel comfortable in their own skin and has the freedom to love and form relationships with other people. That's it. There has lately been an abundance of bad faith arguing that those opposing the LGBTQ+ community are doing so to protect their children. To address that, I will speak as a proud father of two kids. My oldest had recently finished the fourth grade and like many kids that age, started developing her first crush. She quickly realized her crush was on another girl in her class. Jury is still out on the boys. She sees that flag as a positive thing in her life because it reminds her she is not alone in the world of feeling how she does. Any harm to children does not derive from that flag. Loving and supportive parents or a community that celebrates diversity in the community. This proposal is cowardly, un-American, and should not be passed. Thank you for your time. Julia Salas, I am sending this email for public comment. Hamtramck has always been known as a diverse community that has accepted a variety of cultures through time. It's the world in two square miles. Times change, but the city has always been a place that people from all over the world know. I moved to Hamtramck during the pandemic as part of the Arts and Culture Commission and quickly relocated from Detroit, previously Dear One and Out of State because of the openness to all cultures and as well as it is important to the city of Hamtramck. And we had a commission surrounding that. A flag representing a huge majority of the world matches us as a city. Hamtramck must look at a reflection of the whole community and provide a safe and thriving space for businesses. I think removing this flag is unnecessary and does not reflect the amazing place that Hamtramck is. Everyone should be proud of who they are, where they come from, and should be safe where they live. Arlo Pickens, hello, I'm a resident and business owner who is vehemently opposed to this resolution. Were I in town tonight, if I were in town tonight, I would be there to say this personally, but I hope my statement and ones like it are heated. This resolution is backwards, wrong-headed, and bureaucratic governance under the guise of neutrality. I know the mayor's homophobic, transphobic public stance. I watched the rhetoric fly last year when council wanted the pride flag banned from Zoskyn Park. I see the posts made by city officials on Hamtramck Square. I understand that this resolution has nothing to do whatsoever with the desire for neutrality and everything to do with council members and the mayor's desire to govern the city according to the structures of their religious books. This, as well as their previous stance on this issue, tell the world that Hamtramck is not a place where everyone is welcome, that we do not value all of our citizens, only those that are in the majority. Euphemism frequently used to refer to people who want to enact policy along religious guidelines. Honestly, it repulses me that this is even up for discussion. More than 40 years after the Stonewall riots, after decades of hard-earned rights won by the LGBTQ community, our city government now wants to say loud and clear that they are not supported here, that they are not welcome here, that we are more comfortable with them in the closet, being quiet, not making their identity known. This resolution puts us squarely in line with the worst aspect of American culture. We can do much better than this. I've seen city officials repeatedly online referring to LGBTQ community as disgusting, as mentally deficient, accusing them of being predators of children. These are not the messages I want to be seen as representative of the place where I live. It makes me sick. Pride Month is a celebration of inclusivity, but we would do well to remember that the first pride was that MLK referred to as the language of the unheard. Matthew Sapi, I hope this message finds you all well. My name is Matthew. I regularly involve myself in the Hamtramck community and contribute economically to the city on a weekly, daily basis. As an ally to the LGBTQ community, I'm shocked, disgusted, and angered by the resolution that your city council is pursuing. The Resolution 2382 is a legislative example of homophobia directed towards an already marginalized and heavily targeted community. LGBTQ people are represented by the pride flag in the United States, where there are currently 417 anti-LGBTQ state legislations believed to discuss to eliminate their existence. Considering the origins of how this resolution came to light from the LGBTQ pride flag being flown on the city-owned flag on Joseph Campo near Carver Street, your council is using their power to make this Resolution Number 418. There is no morally acceptable argument that the council can make on how removing the pride flag, which represents love, understanding, and acceptance, is meant to be an inclusive effort. Removing the pride flag is counterintuitive to your efforts to proudly promote and embrace its diversity, as directly stated in both versions of the resolution. This is especially concerning as the author of this resolution, Mayor Amir Galah dedicated his efforts to drafting this for discussion rather than alerting self and Hamtramck residents about the implosion of the nearby incinerator, in addition to the extremely bad AQI from the Canadian wildfires. This resolution is far more than whether or not we can fly a certain flag in Hamtramck. Should this pass, this will demonstrate LGBTQ individuals will no longer be supported and loved by the community. It will show we do not care about the unity in Hamtramck, and we would rather appeal to radical and racist minorities who do not promote positive decorum or value the presence of those different than themselves in our city. It will show that we do not welcome people who are different and that will impact everyone. Every human being, regardless of race, creed, ethnicity, political belief, and in this case, sexuality, deserves to feel safe whether they live in occupied space. The Hamtramck City Council is not fooling anyone by marking this resolution as a path to peace in our community. Peace requires understanding and acceptance, and they are doing neither by removing LGBTQ flags. By passing this proposal, you don't need to open the door for radical racist groups. They are already here, and they will have received exactly what they wanted by denying everyone else the right to feel safe and accepted in Hamtramck through the resolution. Stop this blatant violation of First Amendment rights immediately. The opportunity exists here to ensure that Hamtramck remains a welcoming and open place for all people, and I expect Hamtramck City Council recognizes. Thank you for taking time to read this and your consideration. Martha Mazarigos, I am against the vote to suppress LGBTQ+ community voices. Do not cast this vote to forbid pride flags from being displayed on public property. This is unfair for the voices of this group under attack. Adina Schechter, as a resident of Detroit and someone who is a frequent visitor and lover of Hamtramck, I am shocked at Resolution 2382 that seeks to not allow LGBTQIA+ flags to be flown on the city properties. When I read that the city does not want to open the door for radical racist groups to ask for their flags to be flown, I couldn't believe my eyes. The queer community represents love, unity, acceptance, and justice. Allowing our flag to be flown is a statement of all those values. I find that calling that flag the LGBT flag a symbol of love would ever be considered a gateway to giving radical and racist ideologies they see on the table. As a Jewish person, I have to imagine that if the city was asked to fly a Nazi flag, the answer would be an unambiguous and resounding no. Flying a flag of love did not open the door of hatred if you do not allow it to. To be neutral is to be complacent to the erasure of queer people from the public eye and hearing spaces. This is exactly what the bigots want. I feel compelled to speak out against the idea that neutrality is the best opinion when faced with the choice to celebrate marginalized community that is quite literally in danger from violent legislation on the local, state, and federal level. I urge the city councils to stand with the LGBTQIA+ community. Do not allow the intimidation tactics of vandalism and violence make us cower to inferior. Now is the time to stand up and support each other. Thank you for your time and consideration. Adina Schechter. Claire Nawaf Boyd, as a Hamtramck resident, I do not support HPD acquiring tasers. Tasers are preferable to the use of guns. I'd rather see us spending resources on something other than weapons, especially given the history of one HPD officer tazing another. Let's prioritize less weapons for our police. Cameron Frank, the most beautiful part of Hamtramck is that it fully embraces the melting pot idea. People from every walk of life are corralled into this two-square-mile city and live side by side in harmony. Churches, mosques, synagogues, bars, Euromats, Yemen cafes, all institutions with different ideas of what is supposed to be right, yet still keeping peace and living amongst their neighbors happily. Why would you want to deny someone their right to fly a flag that says, "I'm here and I'm proud and I'm unashamed of it"? It is not unconstitutional. Penelope Bowler, I'm a resident of Hamtramck and I oppose the removal of the pride flag in the city. Hamtramck is a diverse city that is unmatched across Michigan. Removal of the pride flag represents a few exceptions that are unfortunately prejudiced. Guys, I'm almost done. Please just bear with me. Removal of the pride flag represents a few exceptions that are unfortunately prejudiced against others who do not share their values. This is the U.S. and the protection of the LGBTQ population has been passed in the language of legislation of the Elliott Larson Act. Thank you for your time. Please don't allow the city to be crippled by new lawsuits because of council's actions. Sincerely, Penelope. Below is my personal comment regarding 2382. Hello, I am writing to you today as a member of the non-binary community. Resolution 2382 is in direct opposition to decades of work by individuals of various races and cultures that have come to inhabit and call the land we now live on home. No, I said the land we live on, we now live on. As a member of the non-binary community, I have personally found a lot of comfort and acceptance of my personal identity from a group I did not originally expect, the local and national indigenous tribes. Within many indigenous tribes, people of my identity are widely accepted and often viewed as prominent members of their communities. While I go into each and every of the 40-plus terms that exist in varying tribes, including our local Anish-tenabi, I am instead going to use a term Two-Spirit. Two-Spirit has grown to become a launching point to convey the overarching term of which we may describe as non-binary individuals within indigenous people across the continent, but is not inclusive to gendered identity, is not a radical idea, nor is it new. Tribes across the United States and right here in Michigan have lived with and accepted those of us that do not fit in the modern binary for nearly a thousand years. If this is the new information to you, a good place for additional research to further, to avoid further missteps, is the Indian Health Service website. You can input this URL at access and she gave you the link. Or I'm sorry, I can't say she. I'm not sure what the name is. The respect and prominence of Two-Spirit individuals within indigenous communities reinforced illustrates the needs for representation and celebration of gender diverse communities in our local government and leadership. Resolution 2382 is contrary to celebrating individuals at a local level and excludes people who hold to realities that existed here long before the city of Hamtramck was established. A resolution targeting the people, the public display and representation of any marginalized community during our most visible and important months of the year is appalling. I, along with many of my peers, have had to remove certain destinations from our future plans for fear of our physical safety, and I do not want to see Hamtramck follow that path. If this resolution passes, Hamtramck loses its ability to claim itself as a diverse city of individuals and will be on a quick path to joining those very destination as unsafe locations to visit and reside in. One final point, have you thought about the mental health effects that a resolution like this will have on the community in which it targets? At present, LGBTQ youth are four times more likely to commit suicide due to harassment and stigma placed by actions like this. Have you seriously considered the impact this takes by placing a community driven by love and acceptance? As a hate group comparing it to racist and radical groups, the personal religious views of elected officials in Hamtramck cannot be prioritized over the mental and public safety of LGBTQ residents. My family has a long history in Hamtramck, and we always were proud of the inclusivity that Hamtramck holds. I boast it about the diversity when I am able to and hope that you reject this resolution so that we can continue to have a city that uphold the diversity so that I can continue to be proud of the city. The city deserves better with empathy, love, and our deserved some. Jessica Wu, I am writing to express my disagreement in the banning of pride flags on city property. While I'm not a resident of the city, I live in Poltown, Detroit, a mile south of the city and spend a lot of time there and love the city. I want Hamtramck to be a place where everyone feels safe and welcome to be their authentic selves. Please consider the harm that banning pride flags will have on our community. The pride flag represents a beautiful diversity of the city and should be something that is celebrated, not banned. Thank you for your consideration. Okay, so almost, there's two, there is still two, I still have to, there was two public comments. Alois? I'm sorry, I did that the first time around to Eleanor. Kriemina?
Maybe you in the audience have come here.
No.
I'll address you then, okay. Maybe you've come here today to share your personal feelings. Maybe you have come here on someone's advice. Some of you maybe believe we have a need to feel victimized. Some of you may believe that the flag's display in and of itself is an act of aggression. The result is the same. You came here to express that we are not a part of the community to be celebrated. Lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender individuals bring a vibrancy and a positivity to this community, and it's crucial as a community we celebrate these contributions in the face of discriminatory legislation across this country. These members have helped me find a home here in Hamtramck in the future through Wayne State University. We live in America for its freedoms. I, it follows, I should be free to live the life I choose. The world in these two square miles has and will continue to have LGBT residents, whether they come here for the community or come from it. 7.2% of adults are LGBT in some form or another. And although it may be a hard pill for some of you to swallow, statistically, nearly a tenth of you and your loved ones is LGBT in some form or another. I do not wish to spend the next 30 years in a split community trading begrudging stares. I think you know better than to make your home a place of violence and/or distrust of your neighbor. Just outside that door, there is a poster, just outside this door. There is a poster hanging from the Hamtramck Historical Commission. Its shares, the donor was proud to be Polish. The first listed antonym of pride is shame. Is this a place I should not feel proud to exist? Abu Ahmad Mohammed Khalil Naim Muhit, I urge you to oppose this shameful resolution. Mohammed Amir, I urge you to confront whatever hatred has fostered such a shameful proposal.
I moved to Hamtramck last year because I was ashamed to live in a Michigan city with such a shameful and embarrassing history. If you don't know, Wind Up Michigan is known for being a sundown town. They're called sundowns because it was dangerous for Black and Brown people to be out after dark, or else they would face civilian and police harassment. If we allow Hamtramck, Michigan to adopt a legal standard of bigotry, it's only natural that the queer presence here, your neighbors, are forced out due to hate crimes and police harassment. It's obvious what you're doing, and it's disgusting. In the eyes of the law, I am a transgender woman. In the eyes of many of you in this room right now, I will be never anything more than a gay man. That is fine. I'm not here to tell you what to think, what to do in your spare time. Interfering with clear expression is a violation of our rights. I know the movement to ban pride flags in Hamtramck has been supported by big money interests, some of whom are in this room with me right now. What we lack in funding, we will make up for in perseverance. Anti-gay and anti-trans legislature will not be tolerated in Hamtramck. You want us to leave? Come and make us. We will vote you out before you ever could.
Let me just make sure. That's all the public comments.
Okay, thank you. I would advocate for you to get some raise for reading all those comments.
It was three hours worth of public comments.
Yes. So before we move to the next section, I don't think many people who send comments read the resolution. It's not talking about LGBTQ in any way or form only. It says religious, ethnic, racial, political, or sexual orientation. In this room, I found earlier a person whom I met outside and asked me, I want to raise the flag that says, "La ilaha illallah Muhammad Rasulullah." There is no God, but God Muhammad is the messenger of God. He belongs to some religious group, and he's already telling me, I want to raise that flag if you raise some group's flag. And I told him, if this resolution passed, you are not going to be allowed to do so. So we are not targeting one group or another. Those people who accused me of hating them, half of my boards and commissions are either LGBTQ or supporters of LGBTQ. And I know them one by one. Some of them are in this room right now. Some of them were appointed by the former mayor. I never fired anybody who belonged to the LGBTQ. And you can do some research. Even the former mayor herself, I appointed her back in the DDA, and she's the biggest advocate for LGBTQ. So how are we hating those people? But when some commissions that I appointed are trying to undermine my power and the city council's power and violate rules and misinterpret terms, then I think some decisions has to be taken to clarify things and to make it clear. Those people who didn't understand this section that says countries, represented by some countries, we're talking about the countries that have immigrants in Hamtramck. For someone to mention Taiwan, Avokasa, Burkanafasu, Mozambique. Who cares about these countries? We have no immigrants from these countries. We're talking about countries that have immigrants in this country, and this international flag resolution that was passed in 2013, 102, set specifically international flags that reflects the international character of the city. Why are we talking about Taiwan or Mozambique or Burkanafasu? We don't have any residents there. But there's also a violation of that because you have to pay some money to raise your flag on Joseph Campo. Well, I know so many countries here that are not represented by those flag either. We have people from Iraq, the Iraqi flag is not there. We have people from Morocco, Algeria, Mauritania, Somalia, Afghanistan. None of these countries have flags there. Why? Because nobody paid the $300 to raise that flag. So even that, the Human Relation Commission did not do a good job with that because every country that have residents here should have, you know, the opportunity to raise their flags in Joseph Campo in the month of July only. So if you don't understand which country, we made it clear at the end, which flag should be allowed? The US flag, city, states, and POW flag. So are the only ones that should be flown in the city property. So are the only ones that should be flown in the city properties. If you have your flag on your own properties, I will defend you. I released a statement to denounce the vandalism that happens to one flag that was thrown in the garbage from a private property. It's nothing that caused any safety issues to the LGBTQ members in the community. We'll defend you, we'll serve you equally just like anybody else. But why are you acting as a victim if your flag is not flown in the city hall or in the public spaces? That, that, that shouldn't cause an issue because other groups are acting like victims because they want their flags to be raised there. And like we said, we don't want to open the doors for any other groups who come and ask us for raising flags that you don't like or you may not like. And then we will look, it's going to be like a mess. So I, I, I think it's clear by now and we should move to the next session, which is the consent agenda. And this is approved in a single motion with no discussion. We have, um, A, approval of minutes from the May twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three regular city council meeting. B, approval of invoice register date ending June thirteen, two thousand twenty-three. Approval of pre-approved expenditure date ending June thirteen, two thousand twenty-three. Resolution twenty-two thirty-three dash seventy-two approving appointments of Gary Segansky to the Beautification Commission. E, resolution twenty-two thirty-three dash seventy-three approving street closure for end of school field day. F, resolution twenty-two thirty-three dash seventy-four approving street closure for Hindu religious rally. G, uh, resolution twenty-two thirty-three dash seventy-five approving Michigan Department of Treasury title form L four zero two nine. H, resolution twenty-two thirty-three dash seventy-six annual renewal of priority health insurance contractor for new benefit year.
I motion.
Second. All in support?
Aye.
Aye.
No objections?
Nope.
All right. So we have Mr. Gary. All right, thanks so much, go ahead.
Come on up.
Come on, Gary.
Raise your hand.
Is it Segansky?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Gary, after me, please. I state your name.
I, Gary Segansky.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Beautification Commission.
The duties of Beautification Commission.
Of the city of Hamtramck.
Of the city of Hamtramck.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations.
I'm proud to be here and working to support Hamtramck. And this is an expression of democracy. And we are all working to find the best way to move forward. So I look forward to doing that for you.
Okay, moving to the new business. And we have the first resolution, twenty-two thirty-three dash eighty-two, resolution to maintain and confirm the neutrality of the city of Hamtramck toward this residence.
No, second.
All right, discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Okay, so we explained over three hours with the public comment. It was, actually was approved by the two thousand thirteen. Exactly same language is here, only some of the people from the commission do not understand the word or try to make the problem. That's why, and maybe some of the city employee related, who knows? So only one speaker, young guy, is speak on behalf of this. The young guy said, we are confirming, it was passed by the two thousand thirteen. We just confirming, letting them know what it was and it is there. It's nothing wrong. All of the speakers today said, Hamtramck, great city. They're living with the no issue. That's what they said. We want same way. We prove that majority of the Muslim community know how to live together, how to live together, how to respect each other and we are doing. Only the resolution, I'm the witness, I'm the senior councilman, I've been twenty-nine years, this city. So still not understanding some of the Joseph Campo post donated by the some people that time. So what we tried to bring diversity country flag flown to the Joseph Campo and it was successfully done and it was a great things happen. Exactly same thing was happening and, and happening still. So I want to let everybody know, one of the speaker mentioned, she moved from Wyandotte or somewhere to here because so if you cannot lives peacefully, safely Wyandotte, you can hear, you living peacefully here, you did not make the problem over there. You did not tell them to float the gay flag of whatever flag, LGBT flag over there. Here, our few of the religious faith group came to us, they want to flow to the flag, their own flag to the city of Hamtramck. We said, no, we don't want individual, everybody too, do same practice. It is going to be chaos, it looks ugly and it's going to be division. We don't want that kinds of situation here. Your faith, you believe, you believe, you keep with you and outside the city hall, outside the city property, it's your property. If you drive right now, Joseph Campo, you gonna see the LGBT flag right there. Some, I drop every day and I see the lots of flag, nobody bother, nobody. No incident happen, this city as of today, as of now, somebody hates somebody. And hate is haram for the Muslim people and it is proof that. And you guys prove that we never hate, people never hate nobody and peacefully life is here. Still you're gonna live same manner, nobody gonna bother, nobody. You guys is the one making problem, right here, I feel. If you live alone, if you live alone some other group, there is no problem. Problem is coming, why I need to fly on this flag in right here particularly Hamtramck, particularly right here? Is in your home, no issue, is in your institute, no issue, you believe, you practice, nobody bother, what is the problem? What we are trying to do, confirming from two thousand thirteen what we approved that time and some of the people, commission people not understanding, not implementing and going the wrong direction to true, bring it here today, clear to everybody, peaceful city, good city, we'll stay with the good city, we don't want a problem, we don't want a problem, that's why we don't want a flag here. You like your flag, I like my flag, in my house, no issue, there is no issue, I want to clear that. And that's why I brought it here because when I saw and discussion going cross the border, I spoke to the mayor, the, the person, he is the one problem maker, he is the one wrong interpretation doing and yeah, yeah, again and again, we should not do that. We want to bring and clear everything and it's going to be clear and I'm supporting this one and it will be approved today, no question about it. Also. Also, I want to let you guys know, excuse me. You guys is the one threading us as elected official. Please don't thread us, don't thread us, okay? I'm the elected official. If people like me, they will vote for me. If people don't like me, they're not gonna vote for me. I don't have to sarp here. If I sarp, I will find out the interest of the Hamtramck city. Let me tell you guys one thing, lot of you guys don't know what is the definition of the democracy. Lot of you guys don't know, let me tell you, sixteen president of the United States, you don't know the name, I know the name, Abraham Lincoln, his Gettysburg space, you don't know, let me tell you that. Government of the people, by the people, for the people, a lot of you guys don't know. Let me tell you, of the people, okay? I am of the people, I am elected by the, by the people, okay? And I am for the people. So what I'm doing, what I'm doing because of I elected, I'm, I'm of the people and by the people elected, I'm working for the people. What is the majority people like? What is the good for Hamtramck? What is the majority people will be living peacefully, good manner? That's all I'm doing, I'm doing my job. We are not with the against anybody, we love everybody, we don't hate anybody, we don't discriminate anybody. It is the proof, all of you guys told us, we are living very respectfully, without hate, living in Hamtramck. And, and you move from other city, twenty-nine years ago, I don't see all of you guys, now I see, that means we're doing good job, we keep the good behind, that's why you guys coming and welcome, welcome, anytime. So that is my calculation, please, I'm requesting everybody try to find out the leap in Hamtramck, peacefully, respectfully, please respect each other. Anything discrimination, any hate, crime, anything happening, let us know, let my administration, police department, anything you guys see, we'll take care, we'll take care, we'll find out the why, better why or take care how we can, uh, live together. That's all I'm requesting.
So, um, just, just to, to explain one more thing, please. I mean, whether we are supported by the majority or the minority, we serve everybody equally with no discrimination, but without favoritism either. There, I want to explain the point of the resolution two, two thousand thirteen one zero two that, that gives the human relation the purview to, uh, raise the flags on Joseph Campo, which is flags that reflect the international character of the city. For the past ten years, no other flags were raised on there, other than the country flags. Why now? Because the mayor has changed? Why didn't the former mayor thought, think about that when she was the mayor? So they just want to do it now. That means they knew it was, uh, it was meant to fly only the country's flags. Now they're saying other flags are international flags. Why is this interpretation brought now and not two years ago or three years ago? So you understand, ten years, no issue with this resolution. So this was brought to clarify that resolution. Another thing is the resolution that was approved in two thousand twenty-one to fly the flag here in Zosman Park in front of the city hall. The Art and Culture Commission asked for permission, read the resolution, you will see, Art and Culture Commission has sought permission from the city council to fly the flag in front of the city hall. Now somebody is telling the boards and commission, no, don't ask for permission from the city council, act on your behalf, like they have more power than the city council, to undermine the power of the city council. And that's what, what forced the council members to bring this, to put the limit to this. I mean, because of the previous practice, it should be just done as the previous practice. Uh, if you go ahead and read those resolution, you will find that, that we're just trying to implement the previous practice, nothing new. So, um, this is just an explanation about what's happening. Uh, any further discussions for city council members? Yes, Mr. Chair? Yes, Councilman Shadri. Uh, good evening, folks, assalamualaikum. Thank you so much for being here so patiently. Uh, some of you already passed the bedtime, you got to work tomorrow. Yeah, but here's the thing, uh, folks, I believe in the rights of every human to enjoy their life under the full rights of the United States. The resolution does not prevent private citizens from flying the pride flag around the city. We only want to respect the religious rights of our citizens. Pride Month is a time to celebrate diversity of the LGBTQ community, which includes people of all ages, abilities. No one should be denied access to the services and supports they need to thrive in the community because of their sexual orientation or gender identity. But here's the thing, folks, you guys are welcome to the community, you guys welcome to walk to the restaurants, walk to the grocery store. Why do you have to have a flag flown in this, uh, city property to be represented? You already represented, you, we already know who you are and we, we don't have any hate or any discriminations against that. We get along very well, but making this bigotry, making, making this scene, it's making like you wanted to hate us, it's you versus and others. It's not that, it's everyone included. And this is the community we live. I love where you live, I have no problem, but the community a, as a whole, it has this respect, that we're raising family, we're, we're doing our best to support the community. Therefore, you are not unwelcome, you are welcome here. But we have to respect the religious, we have to respect the people that around here, schools, mosques, churches. I won't take any, uh, longer than this, uh, it's been a night, a long night, but I welcome every one of you. I have no problem with, with anyone whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you, I just want to say happy Pride Month for people that are celebrating the pride. Uh, I believe people are confused about the, um, banning the rainbow flag and bringing restriction. So this is a restriction to not only rainbow flag, any flag to be flown to the city of Hamtramck. City of Hamtramck is still a loving and vibrant city, everyone should be seen and heard equally. But the city of Hamtramck and city official, if anyone feel difference, then he should have let us know or city officials know. And people are combining religious day and, uh, like, uh, you know, rainbow flag, it's not a combination. I know our, uh, ex-councilwoman Amanda Jakowski, she's sending mail or email, she said the religious day and Christmas day that we, uh, offer the free parking and everything. I don't think this is a combination of, uh, flag to be the religious day, this is completely different aspect and we're combining two different things. You guys have religion, you respect, you, most of you are Christian, you celebrate the Christian, Christendom, you guys, uh, go out to shopping and everything. So this is doing for everybody's benefit, not for, uh, for us only. And we love you guys, you're great people, there's nothing wrong with it, you know, we all should live together. It's, uh, as I say, it's a loving city and, uh, we all welcome, we all should celebrate. But flowing the flag is not only rainbow flag, it's just a restriction for any flag to be flown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. And I want to inform everybody to, again, you know, you could, during your, your own property, you could do whatever you want to do, but to clarify this issue here, like we had an issue previously with the commission. And we made, you know, councilman Hassan present to the mayor, uh, Protem, to make sure that our commissions, members of the commission, in any commission, do not overstep your powers. You know, there's individuals that, you know, they posted something on one of the newsletters that council does not approve this, you know what, he's gonna pull, uh, uh, put the flag on Joseph Campo. That means he's daring, you know, council members, you know what, you ain't gonna vote for it, I'm still gonna put on there. So by us having this resolution, we're not banning you from not to put it in front of your house or your little private business, that's your own choice. But to make it clear, like our mayor and Mayor Protem, my colleagues, any member can come say, hey, listen, our tribe have a flag, I want to put my flag, my family has a flag, I want to put on the, uh, Joseph Campo Avenue. So it's more to clarify to everybody here, our board commissions, citizens, that it's, it's an old resolution that's been there for years, it's been practiced before our body here and it's ridiculous now how people want to push it during our time. You know, if really people with the former mayor You know, if really people with the former mayor that really was trying to push this, she should have pushed it for the sixteen years that she's been here in the city of Hamtramck. Why she's trying to put a fuss in the city of Hamtramck? Because she lost. You know, sadly that, you know, sometimes you take wins and loss. But if you have loss, you know, stop, you know, putting hate within, within the community, especially with our mayor or city council. So message again to our citizens, you know, whoever, uh, practice or, uh, are part of the pride flag, you're willing to do what you want to do in your property. That's your property, your, you know, your business, what you want to do. But again, it's, you know, it's all the resolution, uh, resolution, uh, resolution where it's international flags that is presented by countries. If it was to me, to be honest with you, I would just put the American flag. If I know this is, will come to a fuss like this, you know? So I hope, you know, everything, everybody will understand and thank you very much.
Thank you. That was actually one of, one of the suggestions to just put the American flags. But we found out that the money has been collected already for those flags. And so the, maybe the flags, um, have been bought already and they are ready to be flown in there. So we couldn't, we couldn't put just the American flag.
Mr. Chair.
All right. So, yes, Councilman Abu Musa?
Can you bring a resolution, Mr. Mayor? Can you bring a resolution to have just the American flag and not anything else at this moment?
That's, that's accepted. Maybe from this year? Yeah. This year because they collected the money and they bought the flag, so it's already. But that's accepted. Yes, Councilman Abu Musa, I'm sorry.
Good evening, uh, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you be here this evening. We will, we spent almost three and a half hours to get all those comments from publics. And I do not want to repeat it again and again, everything. But LGBT, uh, LGBTQ, this community, living the Hamtramck a long time. So we don't have any issue there. And this flag, if you want to put this flag on there, that was, mayor explained those, this flag only to the international community, international country. I'd like to amend something there, Mr. Mayor, if you want. We, I'd like to put the international country, but the country cannot occupy the other country, like Russia and some other such a country. We do not want to put their flag there. This country occupied other country, we do not want to put those things also. And large number of the community people in here, before we come in there, last couple of days, mayor explained that some Muslim people, they want to put the Muhammad, uh, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, some name there. The Hindu people, they want to put their Christian name there. Some Buddhist people, they want to put their flag. So we cannot put all those together. We do not have enough capacity too. So that's why we want to get the international flag, international country, and the people who lives in there. And mayor told us and told you guys that sometimes they have to pay for the fee also. Um, LGBT, uh, LGBTQ peoples, don't worry about us. Trust us. People elected us. We have the people, we, we live this community and we like to serve you. Nothing different between you and some other people. You will serve you equally. Doesn't matter who vote for us or do not vote for us. And some people running for the, uh, in upcoming election, please don't trade them. They are working for you guys. They are equivalent working for each and everyone. They do not make discrimination X, Y, and Z. We elected for the whole, serve the whole community. And if you have any issue in future, let us know. We try to help you guys, help you guys join. Thank you very much to give us that.
Thank you. So, so Councilman, Councilman Abu Musa?
Just a housekeeping issue. I don't think you ever motion to open the discussion. So you should do that now, please. And then also I think, uh, Councilman Mahmoud motion to amend it should be voted on as well.
Um, so.
I've motioned to discuss the agenda.
We did. We did.
I meant to say.
Yeah, we did open the discussion.
He, he didn't say the word motion, but I think he motioned to amend. So I think it has to be addressed.
Even though he never said motion?
Nobody seconded it, so I just.
I'm saying he never.
So, so we, he was suggesting that as a. The amended resolution. No. I think it's not, like I said, it's not possible now because the flags are already.
It's already saying the American flag.
Right, no, I'm not discussing whether or not you should. I'm saying whether or not.
Do you think that they have right to motion to have only American flag?
No. So we go to here.
Well, what needs to be motioned is, is the amendment of, of Councilman Abu Musa. He wanted to, to add, accept countries that occupy other countries.
Right now, I think we go, we go this far, this one. Let this one go first.
So, so if somebody.
It's my opinion that somebody, some country occupied other country, I don't want to support their flag.
You know, some people may bring a flag that, you know, for example, Russian flag, Ukrainian community here don't like. So that's gonna be a mess. It's gonna be a problem.
We start with this one.
But that's, if there's a Russian citizens in eleven Hamtramck, why not?
I mean, if we allow them, they already collected the money to, to be flown the flag.
So why you gonna neglect?
That can go and then next time, we just only have an American flag. All right. That's accepted for next time. This is the last time for international flags. And maybe next time just. We'll make an amendment to the resolution. I support that. Thank you. All right. So any more discussion?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman Mayor.
Yeah, I'd like to thank everyone, uh, city of Hamtramck, all the residents into come to city council today. Everyone, they mentioned what he want. Uh, I'd like to thank all the, my community. I have respect all my community, what they want, what they doing. I have respect that one. I am support all the resolution what we have, uh, twenty-three, eighty-two. Thank you.
All right. So we're gonna have to vote on it unamended, just like it is now.
As it is.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes, you put me in a spot.
You're the one brought the resolution forward.
I thought it would be easy one. Councilman Chaudry.
Oh. Oh. Yes.
Thank you. Councilman El Samiri.
Uh, yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Fai.
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution twenty-three, approved.
Calm down.
All right, please calm down, guys. All right.
We are one community.
All right, thank you. Do I have to break the tie?
No.
Okay, thank you. So we move to the next one, resolution twenty-two-three, dash seventy-seven. Authorization to enter an agreement for the development and sale of twenty-four zero seven Danforth Street to Fatma Asanani.
Motion.
Second.
Yeah, can you wait a minute for something to clear up?
Sure.
Uh, Fai motion. I was seconded.
Awesome. Yes, I'm here defending and representing Fatma Asanani, who is purchasing or intending to purchase a property on two four oh seven Danforth, which, um, is a new addition to our Lazio program of being able to purchase a lot adjacent to property, um, which we chose something added. So they are going to, uh, make a residential expansion of a sunroom. Um, and you can see, we sent files to you. I'll be brief. Um, so this is just to approve, uh, this sale of the city lots. We still have a lot of city lots and are planning to advertise them, uh, in the coming weeks. Um, so we are, I'm gonna go, search the lots we available, putting a sign out so people know that are walking around. Um, and so people can take part in this program. We can get these lots to where they want to build. Thank you.
Go ahead, Hassan left. We still have, um. Yeah, he had to go for an emergency.
What? What he know?
Yeah, is there any discussion or not?
No.
No. Let's move. We get distracted here.
Is this the first one that's been done in the city of Hamtramck or there was previously?
No, they, they did the more, they did the last.
This is the, I would say the third residential expansion.
Yeah, you wouldn't have to.
No, I'm saying as this plan, as a, as, as this type of, uh.
And like you're saying, the exact same page?
No, no. I'm saying exactly the same thing here. As, what, what is this called? The sun?
Sunroom.
Sunroom? Is there previously?
Yes, there has been.
Okay.
There has been.
All right, it's okay. So it's nothing to do that we have to.
No, no. And but these, so these plans that are here are not set in stone. So this is just a proposal to get the property. But, uh, in two years, once they have built a property and it's, the residential footprint has been expanded, um, the building department will defer determine if that's the residence, if it's, the residential footprint is expanded. But if, for example, if they don't build anything and they just put a garage, then that property would go back to the city.
Yeah, they get a no sir.
In fact, we literally just have to send a demand letter out to one recently that will try to hold fast.
And that's what I mean. Okay. All right, sounds good.
Hello?
Thank you.
Okay. Good, go ahead. Colors.
Uh, Councilman Fai.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Chaudry.
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri.
Uh, yes.
Hassan is no longer present. Mr. Mayor, resolution twenty-three, seventy-seven, approved.
Thank you. Uh, next one is resolution twenty-two-three, dash seventy-eight, approving the purchase of one street sweeper truck for the Department of Public Service.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, uh, we have John, our DPS director, here to, uh, talk about this one. This is kind of his baby, so I told him he's got to defend it.
Unfortunately, I lead a department where everything's expensive. I hate to be labeled, uh-oh, there comes John, there's comes a lot of money. Um, hopefully you'll be able to start thinking of me as Mr. Progress. That's literally what I'm trying to do. Um, what we have before us is, you, the board's already approved, the council's already approved the first streets sweeper. And coming in, you're asking for another one, probably they go, what, what, what's another one? So that's what I'm gonna explain. The intent of the department's always was to get two of them. A proper street sweeper program has two units. There's two different types. One is called a mechanical unit, goes first, picks up all the big items. And then you have, it's followed with another, another one that sucks everything up, defines. Uh, the best analogy I can do on this, I was trying to think of something and I'm not gonna say the person, but I know somebody got, somebody spent a hundred fifty dollars on flowers. A whole bunch of marbles in there, water and sand, all this, all these flowers. Gave it to his girlfriend. Problem was for their anniversary, it was his ex-girlfriend's anniversary date. And this to say, those flowers got busted up all over the floor along with the glass. So nobody's gonna grab their vacuum cleaner to come vacuum that stuff up. You got to broom it up first. So the same analogy as with the street sweeper. You have to sweep up the big items first before you can use the vacuum. Basically, that's the difference between the two units. The problem is, I was gonna come to this board later to ask for this on another budget. There's not, not giving me any available. So I put the feelers out with, with companies that make them, said if anything comes available, let me know. Um, Detroit ordered six units on last year's prices, which was a lot less than what they're gonna be, like fifty to sixty thousand dollars. Uh, Detroit only took delivery of five of the six units. So they had one unit and the company tagged it for Hamtramck, pending coming council. So we could wait and I could order one later in the year, but it would take probably a year, two year and a half to acquire. Or we can move forward with the purchase of one now and put it in, we're training with the new one that we're getting so that our staff is trained with both units at the same time. So I talked to the controller of the air, found out if we could do it or not. He said it was obtainable to do this year. So that's why I'm bringing this forward because it is a big cost savings to the city to get it now than it would be to get it later and then have to wait a lot longer.
First basically was up sixty thousand dollars.
Okay, now, the first one, you bought it?
You received the, the, the first one?
No, we received it near the end of this month. And the other one that I'm talking about now, we would get at the exact, pretty much the same time. It's already in stock in Auburn Hills. Um, I, I think you all have a graph of, of a decision that the department made to save, to save the city about a million fifty thousand dollars. And the council's been pretty generous with this department on allowing me to get what I think this department needs to be successful. Um, and I wanted to list that because a lot of times everything's approved, but nobody really follows up. But the council let them know, hey, we got this, we got that. This is the changes that's happening. So I listed the machines that we've gotten already. Uh, we picked up an F-two-fifty. We picked up an F-one-fifty. Uh, we picked up three F-three-fifties. We picked up a street sweeper. We picked up a Kubota four by four utility vehicle, which is gonna be one of the two. I plan on coming back to see you again for a second one and in the near future. Uh, but this will be for snowplow, uh, can handle the heavier snows and whatnot. All those items that you've already granted for the department totaled about six hundred fifty thousand. Um, and we saved a million. So just, everybody talks about big numbers, especially in this department, a million here, ten million here, five million, a couple hundred thousands. It's hard to relate it. But just seeing, saving the million dollars, the one decision the department did, look at all the assets the city acquired for it. It's just been, it's, it's huge. Five new trucks got delivered with us in the last two weeks, uh, which is great. But the guys, I have a lot bigger of the apartment now, I'm gonna be up to ten guys from, from four. So, um, I even put the pending approval items in there that are on the agenda tonight to show, you know, what a million dollars can do for the city.
Jonathan May, these street, these sweepers are actually somewhat designed to work in tandem. The first one that the department purchased was actually a vac model, which we're also gonna be using to vacuum out the basins, the catch basins, which right there is gonna save us about a hundred thousand dollars of contractor fees alone. So just by purchasing the first one, that happened. Um, the vac model isn't designed really to be, to pick up heavy debris.
Especially alleys.
Particularly alleys. As you know, we have a lot of alleys, we're paving a lot of alleys now. We want to keep the alleys clean as well. The one he's proposing to purchase now is a mechanical model that actually has two sweepers in front of it that essentially sweep the big pieces into a chute. It flips it into the back. The vat comes behind to get all the little stuff. So they're designed to work in tandem to get a much cleaner surface. Um, and that was the original plan, was to buy the other one at a later time. Fortunately for us, Detroit backed out on one. We got last year's pricing. We were gonna do this probably next season at a price of another sixty thousand dollars. So it's a lot more cost effective to do this now for the long run.
Yeah, that's the, the cleaning cost. We put the sixty, seventy thousand dollars, I noted that on the sheet. That's just basically what, what we're saving on the one unit from, from jetting and the, and the catch basins and gate valves that we have to vacuum out. That does not include the preventive maintenance on all of our catch basins within the side streets that we're not doing. So if we actually ordered that out, we would be spending hundreds of thousands of dollars a year cleaning out catch basins.
That's a very good point. So we're spending a hundred thousand on doing the catch basins we identified we got new. That's not going above and beyond doing all the ones we probably should have done. So.
All right. So, so I will, I mean, this is something good. It looks good, but first, I, we haven't received the first one, right? To see how effective this would be. Second, the, the main littering problem that we have is not in the main streets. It's, it's in the sidewalk parkings, like park, uh, main parks. Uh, and that needs, does not need a sweeper. It needs, you know, some education and code implementations and stuff like that. Um, so I, I mean, yes, we have a little bit of more money, but it seems like we just wanna focus on certain areas to spend that. While I think there are other priorities that we should focus or at least work on both sides, not. Because it seems like each department now is trying to buy stuff because we have some surplus. But I think there are some priorities that we get asked by the residents, why haven't you done that? Why haven't you done that? And I don't think they would be happy to see more sweepers in the streets while they have other issues like streets that need to be paved, probably, you know, rather than just fixing the potholes and the next season they come back. And so I, 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 I'm okay with this, but I don't think we should take action before we see the first one and see, is it really gonna be effective or not?
Well, the, the, the one we bought is a vacuum. It's eleven inch nozzle. So basically it, it's a big vacuum cleaner is what it is. And predominantly the main use, we're gonna be using it for a lot of it is we'll go through the streets with it. But we still would have to run a mascot in front of it. So it's a pickup truck with some guys, they'd have to stop, pick up the, the bigger items. So we're still running somebody in front of them, which I planned on doing for a limited time until we could order the other unit. Um, the difference with now, we wouldn't run the mascot truck. We would just run the other sweeper. Because the problem with the vac model is with eleven inch hose, you go over, you hit a carpet, it's gonna plug up. You had a two by four, it's gonna go sideways, it's gonna plug up. Because the problem with the vac model is with eleven-inch hose, you go over, you hit a carpet, it's gonna plug up, you hit a two-by-four, it's gonna go sideways, it's gonna plug up. And then, I think there's a, with the paperwork you have, it just shows the life expectancy, the life expectancy of the units doubled, when you run them tandem than if you run them singular. It's a lot less abuse on the machine, plus the filters and everything don't get plugged up, you know, as bad. For one example, another example I give is over on, by the stadium, when we had an issue with, the parking lot's really bad. So they wanna send a sweeper in there, you know, a vac model, we wouldn't have been able to use our vac model out there. They would've vacuumed up the parking lot, they would've vacuumed up the asphalt. But the first unit, the mechanical unit, would've swept it into the dustpan and then put it into the hopper. So, there's advantages for both, especially when alleys are rough, I wouldn't dare run a vacuum out of through an alley. And hopefully with the alleys that we're redoing, I'm trying to get them on an alley maintenance program to where these units are going through. Cause we do get a lot of bigger debris in the alley, cause it falls out of the cans and everything else, so.
Also, if I, if we don't finish the alleys, and if we don't have alternate ways to people park their car, I mean, sweeping the, uh, street is gonna be difficult anyways. So you're gonna wait for next year, maybe finish all, all our alleys, let's put alleys priority.
Well, we still have one coming, we still have the one coming at the end of the month, which is the vac model, which I intend to start using. The only difference, the way we use it is gonna be a little bit different than if we had a tandem unit. And then the training, the training I got is, got for free, they can be trained on both units, to the company that we got the unit from.
I, I got a question here. These sweepers, they don't come dual, where they do both, start by buying two units. I know Detroit has units that will clean up anything.
Now they have.
Cause my streets actually have hamtramck, have Detroit, and sometimes Detroit area could, they could have stopped that, sometimes it needs a hand man, but.
They, they run, uh, two trucks.
They run.
They have a front truck that runs through, well, actually they have three, they have a water truck that sprays, they have a mechanical unit, well, they have a mechanical unit that picks up the big stuff, then a water truck, and then they run with the, the vac model. Uh, and I think that's in the litter, uh, the agenda item too, there's a lot of cities, Ann Arbor, Warren, that are doing the street sweeping program, they, they all run tandem units.
But, I, I don't think it's, you know, common sense, if, if we, you know, because the first unit, it's really expensive. And I know they're expensive, but barely you will get any two-by-fours or anything that's big on the road. And you, and you talk, and I'm not, and I'm not referring to alleys, I'm referring to streets.
Big is probably with iron and cement.
I don't think you will see a big two-by-fours, and if there is, I think one, one of the men could actually be there, you know, before the machine sweeper and pick it up.
Pick it up.
I, I, you know, and like, I'm, I'm gonna, I'll call on, on our mayor, you know, we're happy that we're plus, but I think we need to take it easy on how we're spending the money. Uh, citizens are happy that we, we're looking good in the city.
Right.
Uh, I think we need to work slowly, and, and especially if the machine hasn't been, hasn't arrived yet, I think we're moving too fast of getting another machine. And, and, and if I'm not mistaken, I think there, there is machines out there that do both, both, uh, either heavy equipment or, you know, anything like dirt.
Not, not that I understand, I researched many of them, but it's always two units. The, this unit's a Pelican unit, it's a world, it's used worldwide, it's the most popular mechanical unit out there.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, yes, Councilman Chagri.
All right, I, I, I believe Mr. John is trying to say that he needed to have a second one, in order to pick up the debris, big debris, and going through the alley it will require. So, we understand, uh, but thing is, in order to get this full services done, he's looking for the second one. And, I mean, we already spent one of, already approved one of them.
Yes.
And that is, you know, coming, and the second one, it will, may help him to get more debris and more alleyways cleaned up. So, uh, you know, even though it's a budget adjustment and more money coming out of the surplus, but we, we got, we, we, we're gonna do it today or tomorrow.
There's a long, the long-term maintenance, the other thing issue I looked at is the filters on the vac model are expensive. Um, every unit that I've negotiated, I usually get the price, and then I tell them I wouldn't be of interest unless it can include ten thousand dollars worth of maintenance parts. So the units that we're getting, we're getting enough maintenance parts to last us for a while, because I wanna buy a unit, have to come back and buy brushes, buy filters, buy this, buy that. So every unit that, that's, that you see is coming, the one we have is coming with ten or twelve thousand dollars worth of parts, this one has ten thousand dollars worth of replacement parts coming with it. It's the filter, so like you say, you put it, you're just putting more strain on the vac model. And then what you end up doing is just spending more on the maintenance on it, because you're plugging the filters up fast, cause you're putting in items in that unit, and it's not really designed to take a beating on all the time.
But Johnny, you know, one thing, so, you knew, I guess, I mean, see, you didn't ask for both of them at the same, in the beginning, you know, to, to get, to get this, us to.
I took the, the unit that was best at the time for the city because of the, the capabilities of cleaning out the.
Right, I'm, I'm all for the cleaning of the city, you know, I know, I did myself many time clean up in the alley, you know. Uh, there's alley behind me, there's across alley, I mean, we need to have those equipment. And the city, in order to get the city cleaned up, as a city official and as an administration, has to step in and step forward. I, I understand, but it's up to my colleagues and. I mean, and, and it's a great idea, I think it would be for better service and more efficient way, but like Councilman, um, Muhyid Mahmoud said. Ha, you know, most of the alleys haven't been fixed yet, it's, it's a mess, so is that a priority to try to fix some alleys before we get the machine to clean the alleys? And some streets too, because that, like, that's the most concerning issue at this time for the residents, the streets and alleys. They keep asking us about that, and we are saying, we are waiting on some grants from the, the state, some grants from, you know, Ministry of Transportation that we applied for. And if we get them, we'll be able to fix those alleys. So, um, I, I think it's a great idea, but I, I think we should try the first one and see if it's efficient, and if there's a little bit left, then we can order the other one.
Yeah, the only reason why I brought it forward, I've talked to Max about it, and he said he had a concern about it too, is this was the savings on the unit.
I understand.
Because I don't think I'd be doing my due diligence, if I did bring it to the council and say, we can get a unit at last year's prices over what we're gonna pay for it down the road when we need it. So that's one reason why I brought it forward.
Amir wanted to say something?
Yeah, I wanted to just say that, um, you know, I think we need to look at the two units individually as to the functionality. So, the, the sweeping unit, the one that is being proposed right now, does a totally different job compared to the one that we've already brought. But, now if we delay the purchase, I, I mean, I talked to John and Max about this purchase at this particular point in time, and the reason, you know, I, that, you know, I'm okay with it was because I first of all wanted to get in those savings, but the more important thing is that the availability of the unit later on might be, might take a year or two. You know, in the meantime, what we are going to do to the unit that we already have, which is the vac unit, that we will be compromising its efficiency, uh, by the way we are going to use it. Because even if we pick up, you know, uh, manually, you know, big items in front of it, but the dirt and, and, and the mess that's gonna go in, which can be swept up by the sweeper, will clog up and will reduce the, you know, efficiency of the machine and the life of that machine. So that's why I told John that if we can get these two together, it will be a much better program to implement than something that we buy, use one right now, and then buy another one in a couple of years, and then try and make it work.
I, I think it's a great idea, like you said, but, but like I mentioned, the main problem that we have in the city is not in the main streets, it's in the front yards and in the parks. And I think it needs a different way of, of cleaning.
I totally agree with you, and I think, uh, the city is trying to address that, uh, which, through the court department. And what we have done is, we have, you know, hired a few more, uh, part-time court, uh, officers, who are working on, you know, improving the, uh, enforcement of the court, city courts, uh, to make sure that, you know, the, the, the way the ci, you know, the citizens live in the city, they need to be, you know, conditioned to take care of the city, and the court enforcement department needs to make sure that that is being done. And I think the city is working in that direction as well, uh, that's why we hired, you know, three different, three more officers on our agendas to implement the program. But we are doing all of that, uh, but I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we make the city look as clean and as nicer as we can.
Mr. Amir, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but Mr. Mayor, I think it's getting really late, let's, um, minimize the discussion. I think, um, majority, uh, elected official, whatever, you believe, believe that if you wanna buy it, then purchase it, if it's not, then let's vote it out. Because, yeah, it's just, it's.
Mr. Mahmoud, give, give me thirty seconds.
Sure. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. John, we are getting, we are getting one vehicle already on the order, another vehicle you want to try to buy too. But, if we don't have a surplus, we do not buy this vehicle, am I right? If we do not have a surplus budget, you do not, you do not bring this vehicle on the agenda, am I right?
Uh, we do have the money.
Yeah, we have.
If I don't have a surplus, last twelve, thirteen years, we don't have a street sweeping. Let's try to with one of those, and let's see the, how is walking with this. We have a more important thing for the street, alley, and sidewalk. I, in my opinion, at least, we don't have a last couple of years, none even, uh, street sweeping. Let's start with the one of those things, and how many times are you gonna sweeping the street? Uh, per week, per month, or yearly sometimes?
Uh, no, quite a bit, it's gonna be on a regular program, at least, at least once every couple of weeks, on, on the side streets. Before we were doing the residences once a year, and then we're doing Joseph Capo once a week. But the plan I'm putting in place, it's gonna be done quite a bit.
I was a little apprehensive, but first two, because my first words to him were, you know, we didn't get the first one yet.
And I didn't know, to be honest with you, I didn't know that these units were on a backlog, or else I would've proposed this whole plan differently when I first approached the council. I would've.
I like, I like.
Street sweepers on back, on back work, you know.
I'd like to, I'd like to, Chad, uh, use this chunk money to the sidewalk or.
All right, you have thirty seconds. I mean, I, I, like I said, I support this, and I think it's a great idea, but I'm very cautious about getting them bef, the second one before we try the first one and see how effective it is. And just to be safe and focus on priorities, I, I would, I would support it for next year, I mean, that's my opinion.
I, I appreciate that.
And it's up to the council, I mean.
Oh, well, can I get a vote?
Yeah, we can get, we can get a vote, we can vote.
Councilman, Councilman Mahmoud?
No.
Councilman El Samiri?
I can agree with the council.
Yes or no?
Well, yes, it's your decision, discussion.
I'd like to agree, yes, if it's not from this year, it's from the budget.
Okay, so he's saying, yes, this year, yes or no? Uh, uh, he's asking for this, so yes or?
This year, yes or no?
No.
Okay, go.
Councilman, Councilman Chagri?
I, I would say no.
Councilman Musa?
Thank you, no.
Councilman Fai?
No.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution twenty-nine seventy-eight, fails.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, John.
Probably for next year, please. Yeah, uh, next is Resolution twenty-two-three dash seventy-nine, approving contract extension of the two thousand twenty-two alley reconstruction program.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, we have Tiffany from Hennessy, who lasted all this time as well, I commend her.
Thank you.
In short, this is the contractor that's already rocking and rolling in our alleys, we're hoping to keep them, keep them here and move right into the next phase.
Yeah, so, yeah, so he, um, provided a letter stating that he'd hold twenty-twenty-two pricing, um, for the contract extension, so it was our recommendation to, uh, proceed with the contract extension for, for this next year for clean alleys.
It's good price and saves time.
Okay.
Yeah.
This year, how many alleys we are doing?
Excuse me, we got, I receive three big, uh, signature for the area, for the alley between Roosevelt and Gutson. It's very bad, we need to add this, uh, location for this year's.
So we have our first three alleys selected right now.
Between Roosevelt and Gutson.
We're finalizing that list, and I know that area is on there, so we'll see where that falls in the list and.
We've tried to contain everybody's concerns.
And I know, but some of them, some of them is still, if they wait for the next years, still okay, but some of them is very bad.
We're, we're trying to get at least twenty or so on the list of where we know we're headed next, and we're gonna pri, prioritize those twenty of, with the top, top ones.
Councilman Sumari, start off, yes, from Roosevelt, start from Holbrook all the way down to Council, so you have the whole strip all the south of it?
I'd like to do the whole day, I'd like to do the whole thing, but now we get some location very bad, and very hard working for the whole area. Uh, scoreboard.
In the Joseph Capo area, yeah, Ali's the mosque, the Ali Masque, those side also, and opposite side, also both are very messy.
It's done, the, the one next one is.
That one is done, uh, that one is done.
Need to be.
It, it all depends on the resources, if we get the money, there's a hope we get some more money and we'll fix them all, hopefully.
We go and.
Question, which alleys are you, I know, I know we're working on homes, which other alleys are we doing right now?
So right now, they're doing the ones behind the mosques at Knef and Joseph Capo.
Okay.
So, they're basically at T-intersections, mainly, between. We're hoping to move right into, right behind P and C, which would be the north Knef between Mitchell and Joseph Capo, and then shoot north in the east Joseph Capo alley, taking it all the way to Comer. Our thought process is, if we can do that now, prior to the, um, Labor Day festival at the end of the year, we can showcase where we're heading with this, and it's a very, very high-traffic alley. Uh, we have P and C, we have Little C, we have Main Street, we have Ravens, I mean, it's one of the most trafficked alleys in the city.
Down, down to the.
Yeah, it's bad.
No, it's really bad, I know.
But look, when we do between B and C and all the way down north, those six, seven black alley, we talk for one black alley. Behind, between Roosevelt and, and Gutson. When we do the other one between B and C and all the way down to Casimir or Comer, offer six black alley.
We, we.
If we did this year's like three black alley, it's gonna be enough, it's working for the festival, for the whole area. Better for twenty years, no, nobody did anything.
And, and echo to Councilman Sumari, where residents in the south and, or south side, they, they think, you know, they're, we're just ignoring them. And we're, they're making me on, mostly on that side, it's like we're being ignored, where the business area is being done.
You did one place, one place, everybody's gonna be happy.
And, and it's, and that's how it looks, so how can we explain to our residents who live in that neighborhood, who voted for us, and say, oh, they're gonna come to you, so when are they gonna come? So I, I think if we're able to divide, you know, sort of continue the, from, from P and C all the way down to Carpenter.
Yeah, we have here two Casmirs, okay.
If we're able to fix at least one side and that side, I, I think at least that can, you know, let these people on, you know, emailing us or calling us, hey, how come we're not, we're never having hamtramck? So, hopefully you guys could.
So we're, we're hoping if the stars align, to rip right into all of those really fast.
So I think we can talk about list, but now are we happy with the contractor or not, should we extend the contract?
Same, both, thank you.
Yeah, that's a, yeah, the contract, we're talking about. Okay, so I think we can go ahead and, and vote.
Yeah, let's get a vote down, please.
Yeah, it's a long night.
Councilman El Samiri?
All right. Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Chagri?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Fai?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor, uh, Resolution twenty-three seventy-nine approved.
Okay, thank you. Next one is Resolution twenty-two-three, thank you. Uh, dash eighty, approving the purchase of, uh, and installation of new carpet and tile flooring throughout City Hall.
Motion.
Me again.
Motion.
Second.
Ready to go, I see.
Mr. Mayor, we have John here to talk about this one again, um, I supported this one a lot more. Plus, our, our judge is, is doing a big portion of the court with this as well, so. There's a lot of, uh, a lot of carpet in the City Hall that you don't necessarily see, that's in pretty bad shape. We recognized the first floor is pretty good, the rest of it isn't.
How about the council hall, this one's in the council?
This is in it.
This is in it, yeah.
Most all of City Hall is in it, a lot of the, our side of, the court side is, I think, a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty thousand, should come out of the building fund. I think what we have front of is a hundred and ten, it's about a hundred.
We also note that, uh, we're trying to get good, good quality carpet this time, cause we know we're gonna have it for a while.
Yeah, these are carpet tiles, so, if they dump coffee and stain the tile, we can pull the tile up and replace it. And they won't, won't get these runs that we have currently in a lot of, uh, the offices, we have a lot of trip hazards. And a big portion of that expense is the, the whole second floor, uh, for the police department. Their, their locker rooms are, are over there down the concrete, they got tiles flying all over the place, it's, it's really horrendous. So, I think fifty-eight or fifty-nine thousand alone is, is just the police department.
I know the court is desperate for new flooring, and the judge is, uh, it's really important for her to.
Okay, all right, I don't think. So what do you think about, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, um, what do you think about the, uh, the, those, they give thirty, forty years guarantee, you know, the, uh, what is it called, laminate floor?
Well, I, I, a part of the changes I made would say is like where there's kitchenettes in the different departments, instead of putting carpet in those areas, I'm doing vinyl plank, uh, flooring, so it can be cleaned.
Vinyl plank.
Okay, that's what, looks nice.
All but the courtroom is gonna be vinyl plank.
Yeah.
Um, and then they get the bathrooms and the police department locker rooms, that's, that's gonna be all new vinyl plank.
How about the council chamber?
Council chamber is carpet, you want carpet here because of the noise.
Yeah, and you have too much echo when you have.
Too much echo, if you don't have carpet.
Are you planning to do anything like entrance when we enter to the city hall?
I looked at that, I have proposals for that, I think that's gonna tie into probably another proposal that you'll see me on, uh, for the front of the building, because we're gonna plan on doing all the ones.
This is, this should add this when we enter to the city, like us, front of the police, of.
Lots of tiles wearing for the.
I think it should do the tiles on.
Uh, they, there is for, that's simple, but we originally had the dispatch here, we took that out because it's just gonna get too complicated.
Right where we get in the front door.
Yeah, yeah, right, that's in there.
First appearance of these make a big difference.
That's a different type of tile too, that's designed for a residential area, so it takes a lot more, takes a lot more.
And now, because we're talking about the front door, uh, that front door needs to be, needs to be fixed. It's hard to open, sometimes it hits your back.
Designed that way, if you just touch it, it will start to open by itself, it's, cause it's an assisted door.
The first main door in the, the beginning?
Yeah.
I love the same thing, but you, all you gotta do is touch, barely pull on it, and it opens automatically for you. You're trying to open it completely with, by yourself.
You just have to pull a little bit, it'll start to open, yeah.
Yeah.
It opens easier.
Someone, when I was coming, someone hit him, someone came back.
It, it will reject, yeah. All right, okay, I think, I think, uh.
And the carpet's gonna be, it's not gonna be all one time, because obviously we gotta move furniture, move offices around. We may have tile issues with asbestos in it, we have to mitigate. There's, there's all different things that can pop up, so I don't wanna tear everything out one weekend and say, oh, oh, now we got a big problem.
But we didn't need tomorrow, after the carpet, to come the new issue for anything.
We wanna discuss everything tonight.
Anything, we need to fix outside.
Long night.
Yeah, it's gonna come tomorrow, oh, we need to change this, we need to change the other one.
All right, I, I think we.
We need to fix outside.
We have, we just talk about the carpet, we applied for a project with, with Congressman Cherry, right? To fix the whole City Hall, so hopefully we get something from you.
Buy a new place.
Uh, but anyways, uh. Yeah, I don't think, uh, council. I don't think they should disappoint you in this one, so we can just go and vote.
We can vote, please.
Councilman El Samiri?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Rafi?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Chagri?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution twenty-three eighty approved.
Thank you.
Say one out of two, I bet.
Two?
All right, thank you.
Say we still like you, John.
Thank you. Uh, the last one, Resolution twenty twenty-three dash eighty-one, approving the contract award for tasers and technology purchase to Exxon Enterprise.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Mayor, we have the chief here to speak on it, um, I just wanna face that though. We heard a bunch of comments about, oh, we don't need tasers, this and that and the other, but tasers are a less lethal option before we transition to a fair arm that could potentially kill someone. I mean, a taser is, you know, designed to stun somebody, to take them, you know, into custody a lot easier, so. This is a tool that should help us reduce risk and problems.
What is taser?
I'm sorry.
It's a big, it's, it's basi- I can't, I don't know what the acronym for it exactly is anymore, but it's basically the, it looks like a gun, it's shaped like a gun, but it essentially shoots two yards out.
Yeah, on you. He has one on, uh, sorry.
Do you need to demonstrate, sir?
No, no.
No one?
Can, can we have, can, can, can we test it on Max?
I've been tased.
I've been tased too, so.
Oh, yeah, forgot. I think we have a testimony.
You wanna try?
Okay, so, so, I mean, how, how much is each one? It, it's like a large amount.
They're expensive.
It's a, it's a lot, the purpo- the, the total amount is a lot, because you're looking at, um, a bunch of different things, you're looking at training cartridges, which are included, you're looking at, um, some training options that are included, um, you're looking at what they call the evidence dot com storage for the data for the tasers. Um, this program gives us in five years, they will outfit us with new tasers, so that's part of this program as well.
Okay.
Um, so that's why the cost looks a little higher, but if you've got a lot of different things that are included, um, different car- like I said, different cartridges, the dock, the bay, the storage, and all of the carrying holsters, things like that, that are all included in this battery packs.
Are there cameras on these too? I forget.
These are not, but these, um, and that was part of the, um, reason why we went with Exxon without going out to bid, because they do have a single-source vendor, um, letter that they included with this that allows us to integrate those with our body cameras. So if a taser is pulled, it will activate the body camera, if they had to jump out on something and maybe didn't have a chance to activate it, um, so that is part of it. It's all integrated with evidence dot com, which is what we use for the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office, so that's part of this program as well. So everything kind of, you know, you already purchased, we already purchased the Exxon body cameras, so these are all integrated together, and that was why we chose to stay with Exxon.
We're also heading towards the car cameras as well.
Correct, yes.
To integrate with these, so.
You will hopefully see that.
The hope is that everything's perfectly integrated, and to be truthful, Exxon's got a monopoly on this, I mean.
They do, yeah.
They do a really good job, it's the leader in the industry.
Yeah, they're one of the few ones that actually still, that, that actually make the tasers. Um, so the, the cost of a hundred and forty-six nine ninety-six is, you know, seems large at, at ones, but like I said, it's got a lot of options come with it. It can be spread out over five years if we chose to do it that way, or we can pay it all upfront. And I will include that this does not come from general fund money, this comes from already existing narcotic forfeiture fund money that we're allowed to spend for lawn management.
Okay, so it's not from general, okay.
Not in the general fund, this is, we can only purchase lawn management equipment with that.
I was gonna say that it's not coming from the general fund. All right, even though, I mean, we haven't, we haven't approved anything for the police department. All we did for every.
Mr. John.
All right. All right, let's.
One, one hundred forty-six thousand, how many equipment?
Thirty-five, thanks.
Yeah, so the first.
Thirty-five, thanks.
Are we voting?
So, so, uh, one thing, we were paying once, or we were spreading out to the five years?
Once, once.
We'll probably just pay it all.
Of it all, yeah.
Finish it all.
Yeah, okay, I just wanna clarify.
More things, and then I'll, I'll say I don't have any money.
Thank you, chief. All right.
All right, Councilman Chagri?
Yes.
Councilman Rafi?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Uh, yes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Resolution twenty-three eighty-one approved, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, done with the new business, move to the reports, and it's, it's getting too late, so I'm gonna make it very short, the main report. Not much, uh, just wanna thank everyone who attended the meeting to- tonight, and those who sent their comments by email. Uh, it's been a long meeting, almost five hours. So, uh, thank you all for sharing your concerns, and like I said earlier, we will make sure that we serve everyone equally, and with no discrimination, will be available to protect every citizen in, in the city of Hamtramck, regardless of their religious, or political, or sexual orientation, wha- whatever they believe in. Everyone is free to practice their, their own views and beliefs, so, um, yeah, regardless of the result of the outcome of the resolution, I thank also the city council members for, you know, staying and, um, attending all of them full house tonight, uh, that's what we want in every meeting. And, uh, thank you again, and, um, other activities that usually I mention in my report, there has been, there have been so many events in the past two weeks, attending graduations, speaking in graduations, meetings, I cannot remember all of them, but, uh, we have been very active in the past two weeks. And that's all for me, uh, Mr. Mayor, for time left, so there is no report for him. City council, anyone would like to say anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Rafi?
I wanna thank everybody that showed up here today, especially the ones that stayed until right now with us here. Uh, it's, it's great to be back, it's been a long vacation for me, and it's been, uh, I was surprised by, uh, this long meeting as I got back. You know, but I'm happy to be back, and hopefully the city will, uh, continue, uh, progressing to a better city. And thank you to my colleagues, I understand, uh, and try to work in a way, uh, making the city a beautiful city. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I forget to welcome you back to, uh, your hometown.
With the five hours now.
Thank you, uh, anyone else? Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yes, Councilman Chagri? Just real quick, briefly, I will go. Uh, I wanted to thank everyone who showed up today, and I'd like to acknowledge, uh, Brother Saleh Al-Jaim, Sheikh Al-Jaim is still here, and Brother Abdul Aziz, and Mr. Bill Myers, Mr. Gary, and then Brother Hassan, and Lean Blasi, right here. That is staying still, you're staying with us until this end, thank you so much, and, um, appreciate you all made a comment today, and, you know, this is the community that is striving to do everybody's equality and rights, so, and that's all I wanted to say, but thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, audience, welcome back, Mr. Khalid Rafai, you left your, uh, community. We have lots of, lot to do when you left, but we missed you, welcome back. Uh, I'm gonna congratulate all of our high school graduate, and I just wanna remind you that now you turn eighteen officially, so you can register for vote. Make sure to participate on election, uh, your vote is your voice, and we want you guys to be, move, come forward, uh, and take the lead of the city one day. Uh, and also, I just wanna say, there's no, uh, you know, division or ethnicity. I know some people say they have fear to live in this, uh, community, uh, our friends, they're, uh, transgender or, or LGBTQ, there's, you know, you, you all have right to live free in this community, it's a free, um, uh, I mean, it's a great community, everybody mentioned. So I don't see, uh, is there any fear to be in, to live in our community, and I wanna thank you all, uh, both side, people that are coming in and express their concern. And, uh, thank you everyone again, have a good night.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman Mahmoud?
Thank you very much, uh, we have a big agenda, and we have an issue, a lot of people coming for the support, and somebody have opposed this, uh, flag issue, I hope those people don't, uh, get afraid, you will feel free, the way you live in there before, same way you live in there, I, and I urge police and all our city officials, please, uh, look forward. If there were any issue, solve this issue, let us know, they will be free and, uh, fair, treat them every equally. And last, uh, two weeks ago, especially Memorial Day weekend, our honorable, uh, ambassadors from Washington DC, Bangladeshi Ambassador, he coming to visit our cities, have a great time with him, a couple hours, and he coming, the reason, uh, Bangla- we live in almost hundred thousand people in Michigan, Bangladeshi community people, we need embassy service there. Some reason we are not getting the, um, embassy, um, permanent embassy at this moment. But, uh, Washington DC, who serve this community for, uh, uh, they're gonna be coming two times a year, so I hope they're coming this, uh, summer. I need city council and city official helps to, the, if they're coming, everything will be safe and secure. We had a bad experience last time, uh, Mr. City Manager Max knows, and he knows also, and I hope they're gonna come in to serve the community. Thank you very much to everybody, still, eleven, eleven-thirty, you will hear, thank you, Sheikh, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, only guess I left.
All right.
Okay, welcome Khalid Rafai coming back. And today I am happy to see everyone in Hamtramck to focus something, the issue, to make Hamtramck some bad. People, they speak what he want. All the resident, I am happy to see everyone come to the city, and I am happy to respect all my community, what he want. That's what we do, respect all the community, something to make the city safe, to make the city better. Welcome everyone to come Hamtramck, live here, business, everything, we're gonna work and work him, the Maro. And thank you for Sheikh Salah, they take long time today, and Sheikh, and Abdul Aziz, thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you, thank you, and, and so, um, is there any report for the financial officer?
Yeah.
Do you have?
Mr. Mayor, unless you have specific questions for our controller.
CFO, are you sure? No, really, make a brief.
But I just wanna clarify something, I think, um, maybe there was some misconception about the street sweeper thing. The street sweeper that we bought earlier, it didn't come from the general fund, it came from the road fund. And even this one was going to come from the road fund and not the general fund. The problem is that we can't do alleys from the road fund, it's just not allowed. I, I explored that issue with the Act fifty-one, uh, people, uh, and Department of Transportation, and they said, no, you can't do, alleys are not allowed, uh, under the road fund, unless and until they are streets. You know, so the street sweeper program is coming through the road, uh, money, and not the general fund, just wanted to clarify.
Well, I think that's interesting about that, though, that if you wanted to, we may be able to convert the alleys into their own, if you wanna call them.
Streets.
I'd have to look into the law.
No, there, there, there is a whole process for it, of that, you know, you have to go through and get it approved from the Department of Transportation. And it's not something that, you know, you can literally just do it, you have to follow, you know, and, and go through a process, I think. Uh, but I just wanted to clarify, the street sweeper, uh, money, that it was not coming from the general fund.
Okay.
So there was no issue of, in terms of whether, you know, we have surplus fund or not, it would, it wasn't gonna affect the general fund.
So, so the road fund, we can use it for side streets, right?
Because, uh, road funds are used for, uh, major roads as well as local roads, so all the, and all the, both these major roads and local roads are defined with, and, uh, registered with the Department of Transportation.
Okay.
So only those roads can be, you know, any, any, uh, resurfacing, any, uh, you know, maintenance, anything on those roads can be, uh, done through the, uh, Act fifty-one money.
Okay, all right, thank you so much for clarification. City manager, do you have anything?
Um, I forgot anything today, Mayor.
All right, all right, thank you, and so, next one is the public comments, again, is there?
One hundred twenty-three.
Are you serious? That looks careless.
Uh, let's see, let's see who's here.
Is he safe, he's here?
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair? Lem is tired, Bill is tired.
No, Lem, last.
You turn in?
Turned in.
What did they say? I'll, I'll look at it.
Anybody outside?
Hello again, Mayor and Council, um, first of all, I'd like to congratulate, um, Gary, um, I think he's a great candidate for the Vification Commission. He, um, attended the meeting before he was appointed to figure out what was going on, and really made an informed decision about wanting to, um, engage in community service at that level. So, um, welcome, Gary. Um, and relating to, I also would like to congratulate, um, congratulate Fatma, um, for the approval to make the addition on her home. Um, I think that's a really great program, I'm glad to see that more and more residents are having the option to fly to the neighborhood and, um, build on their own properties. Um, I do have to say that I just agree with your decision on Resolution twenty twenty-three seventy-eight. Um, I think that because this was a long meeting, um, there wasn't time to listen to our controller before a decision was made and really see that the funds were coming from, you know, something that's not out of our surplus and was within budget. Um, and because of that decision, I have a, I have a concern about inflation, um, everything, all prices are going up crazy rates right now. Um, we could have saved sixty thousand dollars, um, just on the unit itself, um, and instead, we're gonna have, um, we're gonna have to pay more later, there's no guarantee, um, when they'll be available, if it is when we want, can I have another minute?
Hi.
Um, and then also, there's the added expense of the maintenance on our existing equipment, plus the manual labor for employees and increase the risk of injury, um, making workers comp, which could also cost more. Um, and lastly, related to the flag issue, um, there were some comments made that said that only national flags have been flown, and that the pride flag was the first non-national flag that's been flown, and that is incorrect. I really encourage council to pay attention to the details, to, um, we can get records of every flag that's been flown over the years, the very second year this, um, resolution was passed, Sicily, the Sic- Sicilian flag was allowed to be flown, um, that is not a nation, that is not a country. Um, the Cherokee Nation flag has been flying for several years, the African Union flag has been flying for many years. With the currently approved resolution, those flags are no longer allowed to be flown. Um, and that is cutting out certain demographics of our community that have been marginalized for several years, decades, centuries. Um, and so I, I just really encourage you to pay really close attention to the language that's used in resolutions, make sure that you're questioning, researching, and making sure that you're making as informed decisions as possible, thank you.
Thank you, so that was one of the violations that the former government did, to fly some groups while the resolution clearly said nations. So they abused their power, what can we do? We weren't there at that time, but it shouldn't be the norm for our future decisions. Um, yeah, continue.
Okay, Hassan, on?
I'm sorry, you in public activities, you know, the emails that the clerk was reading, it was ridiculous. I'm asking for you guys to sit there and do a motion to deny any email for the clerk to read, a hundred and something? This is ridiculous. Nobody says sit there and do emails. You got concerns, you come to city council, you don't come to city council, you ain't gonna talk. There's no need for her to sit there, a hundred and two hundred and three hundred papers, sitting there, we're sitting there just for hours. What time is it right now? Eleven forty-three, people got families to go to, by the time I get home, it's gonna be one o'clock in the morning. This is ridiculous, I've never seen something like this. And then they wanna sit there and say that, about the flag, nobody said we're gonna sit here and put the Lebanese flag, nobody said we're gonna put Iraqi flag, nobody said we're gonna put any flag, no flag should be put, but the American flag, this is America, we're here, we love America, and this is the only flag we, we represent. You don't see me putting the Trump flag, because I support Trump. And I'm gonna say it nice and clear, I used to be a Democrat, ever since they put the book issue, I became a full Republican. And I tell somebody something, that I will never, ever in my life vote for a Democrat. Because of the situation regarding the books and we're hearing our children, thank you, have a great night, and safe, thank you.
Thank you, brother.
Have a good night.
Mr. Bill Myers.
Okay, so, um, uh, why didn't we have a controller come up when you were talking about that issue? I mean, that would've been nice, this was all a sell job, this was, these guys were coming up selling you things, and you had to buy it, and I, and, uh, I mean, even our, uh, city, uh, manager was a former chief of police, he helped you, uh, convince you to buy the tasers, uh, and, um, he knows all about it, I mean, it's a sell job, it's one of those, better seller, you're gonna get it, whether we need it or not, you're gonna, the guy who sells it, that's good. Not saying we don't need it, I'm just saying. Alright, so anyways, uh, yes, I have something to add, okay. Uh, okay, so, I wanna commend, oh, first of all, I gotta talk to the mayor when you talk. So tell, uh, fellow councilmen, welcome back, I really glad that, uh, while Kelly was back with us.
Continue, thank you, Bill.
Did you just say you're glad you came out?
Was that? So I commend you all for, for your patience and, uh, and, uh, what, what did I say? Patience, I guess is the word, and, and sanity, listening to, uh, you know, going through all that, uh, long list of, of attacks. I mean, there was some hateful and disrespectful, uh, speech going on here. Uh, lots of threats being thrown out at the council, being called Hitler's, or, uh, being called ignorant imbeciles, or idiots, that don't know what you're doing. And that's, that was the compliment. Uh, most, all Muslims were against the issue, I mean, were against the flag being in, and most of the binary, not binary community was for it, it was, it was obvious where people were at. It shouldn't be that way, we should all be together somehow. But, uh, you know, not allowing certain flags to fly in any, we're gonna change, we'll change, oh, really?
I was holding it up for ten seconds, let's speak fast.
Okay, so, uh, it's not gonna change anybody's mind about the, the issue, I mean, whether you have a flag or not, to be honest, if you wanna work together, we'll work together. Flag doesn't make difference. Uh, what we need is positive personal interaction between, that, that'll bring the, I asked for another minute.
Okay.
That's a mayor.
Go ahead.
Oh, I have to ask you. Okay, good, thanks, so, uh, you know, we need Muslims helping gays when they're in trouble, we need gays helping, working in the Muslim community, so that we, you know, in commissions, I think we're trying to do that, we're working together, and once we all, maybe some from the LGBTQIA2S, well, community will come up and run for office someday, and we'll be part of you, and, and everything will get better and better, so that's what we're working for. I don't think this issue made anything worse, I really think it was, uh, a problem in the first place, because the Human Rights Commission's overstepped their bounds, we know that. I was a chair of the Human Rights Commission, I know that whole history, and I can tell you, I was the first one, that as far as I know, to bring a, uh, gay person into the commission. And, uh, two meetings later, he helped, he colluded with the mayor to fire me, so I mean, that's, that's how that worked out. I wanna say that, uh, the most difficult challenge, the most difficult challenge we all have is to find a way to live with people we don't, that agree with, and don't think with. We have to use peace, justice, and love. One more thing.
Five seconds.
They're not all international flags, you have an, uh, MIA, PO, POW MIA flag up there, that's not an international flag, and it's controversial.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it. Mr. Mayor, the topic of the conference.
Alright, thank you so much, guys, and now, uh, we move to a closed session.
Motion.
Thank you, guys.
Oh my gosh.